And would you please rise for a standing position and remain standing for a moment. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. One more time. Thank you. Next item is the minutes.
I'd like to add that I'm sorry that the minutes aren't there. We will have them available at the next meeting for all three months. So we're close, but not quite there. So my apologies, but we'll get them taken care of.
There's thirty-four months if we have a next one.
September, October, November. Yep.
All right, the next item is adopting the agenda. Changes, corrections?
The only thing I had heard that one of the supervisors wanted an update on for litigation is that...
No, I, I, I'll let that pass on.
Okay. So that would be the only addition to the agenda would be to add a litigation update from Mr. Gold.
Want to give this? I'll make motion if you do that.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made in the safe. All those who say yes, say aye.
Aye.
Motion was to add that to the agenda so that we can see the rest of the agenda. Is that correct? Make motion to approve the agenda. That issue?
And I'll second it.
Motion made in the segment. All those who say yes, say aye.
Aye.
Motion here. About our school, Dr. Matthews, about here.
Hi, Kathy Gins. I'm here today in Dr. Matthews' absence. She regrets that she was unable to be here today. She asked that I give a instructional update on the changes in requirements from the Department of Education in the area of assessment. We're excited in the schools to be moving into a direction where probably two years ago, the Department of Education pulled five SOL tests out of the elementary. Those were third grade reading, uh, third grade history and science, fifth grade writing and history, and sixth grade history. In those courses, they no longer have end of course SOL tests. And in those areas now, the Department of Education is moving us toward performance-based assessments. So what will be required is in those five course areas, the students, rather than taking a multiple choice local assessment, which was formerly required, students will be doing hands-on, real-world, authentic assessments. So when a teacher gets to the end of the learning unit, students instead of taking a multiple choice test, will now be doing an authentic assessment. And the requirement this year is in all of those courses where SOLs were removed, that that will happen. And going down the road in all grade levels and all courses, students will be assessed with performance-based assessments. We have a consultant from the DOE working with us on this initiative. Her name's Dr. Shannon King, and she is a national trainer and a professor, college professor, and she's done a fabulous job helping our staff to make this shift in assessment. For example, this year in fourth grade science, when students get to the end of their weather unit, in the past, they'd take a multiple choice test, showing that they understood all the weather instruments, the vocabulary. This year, our students will be given criteria by their teachers and working in groups, and they'll be performing. They'll be putting on a weather forecast as meteorologists using the technology and recording. Some students will be doing the morning announcements, giving weather reports. Teachers will be able to assess their knowledge in this way. So it's a more authentic way of seeing what students know about the content. And I think it gives our students a much better real-life application so that as they leave our schools, they've had time to be creative, they've been critical thinkers, they work collaboratively, and they've used a lot more technology instead of the rote teach-to-the-test method that has formerly been done. So this is a requirement from the Department of Education. Our teachers are doing an excellent job of making this shift. We feel it's going to be great for students because they're getting more real-world application in their studies. So we're very excited about it. All grade levels, all content areas this year will be piloting new performance-based assessments. So like I said, we're excited about this shift. We think it's going to be great for our students and great for producing skills in our students. It will help them beyond SOL testing. And then in other news, tomorrow, the RCHS Theater will be performing at Monticello High School for the state tournament at four-thirty, so we wish them the best of luck, and we hope maybe some of you can come out. The holiday season gives us lots of opportunities to come to this school, and we hope that you will. The band concert at the high school auditorium is December eighth at six o'clock. The middle school band and choir concert is December fourteenth at six-thirty at the elementary school. And on December nineteenth, we have our Little Angels. Our kindergarteners do a holiday concert at six-thirty as well. Dr. Matthews wanted you all to know that the school's comprehensive plan will be voted on at the December thirteenth school board meeting, and that she looks forward to sharing more with you about that next month here at this meeting. And finally, we wish you all a happy holidays from our schools. Do you all have any questions for me?
You had a couple of championships.
We did. Volleyball and cross-country. Gavin Jenkins, they took state championship in cross-country, and we're very proud of those teams, those sports. Thank you for asking.
Well, I saw the girls play. I was, I was impressed.
Yeah, very impressive, from the coach all the way down. Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda, public comment. We got a sign-in sheet over in the window. Does anybody else want to sign in? We'll do that. We'll just go through the list first and then anyone that wishes to speak. Yes, the public comment, anyone that wishes to speak or have the potential to do so, just raise your hand and be recognized and direct your comments to the board and try to restrict them to three to five minutes. Sometimes that's possible. So I declare the public comment section open, and the first one is Paige, Mr. Glenn.
Paige Glenn, Jackson District. Gentlemen, good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I would like to address some old business. Last month, you not only chose to ignore a motion to expand the finance committee, you decided to eliminate it. Aside from the procedural issue of if the decision was properly brought, you made a decision to change the governance of the county without providing the public a chance to comment. So again, you have demonstrated that you feel little or no obligation to get the public's input more or less considered. It was stated that the yearly budget process would deal with the financial issues facing the county. I find that statement interesting because no other government body that I've ever found to work with has ever shown that it can do long-range planning with a one-year budgeting process. If you want to believe, if what you believe is true, why is it that banks require three, five, and/or ten-year financial projections before approving business loans? Why are the taxpayers of Rappahannock County not given the same protections as bank stockholders? It is absolutely clear that this county's leadership does not possess the business skills necessary to properly run the county. Furthermore, you have repeatedly turned down those that have offered those skills. I could stand here and ask dozens of financial questions that are pertinent to the long-term financial health of the county, but it's clear that you could not answer those questions because no one has done the analysis and even got, or even gotten the data to do the analysis. How do you guide the county if you have no information or analysis on where the county's financial situation is going? Let me provide just one example that affects our schools. The composite index, as you know, determines how much the school budget is provided by the state. Currently, the county must pay just over seventy-four percent, one of the highest in the state. But if you were to study the composite index equation and relate it to the real estate tax structure, you discover, you would discover that you created a tax statement for rich retirees from the D.C. metro area at the expense of current residents. And I can give you the more detailed numbers if you would like. Current residents with children are hurt by the loss of school funding. Current residents on small acre parcels, not land use, are disproportionately affected when you have to raise the tax rate. So it would appear that your constituents are being penalized while the real estate industry in the county profits. Gentlemen, this county's finances are a hot mess, yet you choose to bury your heads in the sand. I apologize for chastising you in public, but what option is there when you refuse constructive advice? And it's clear you are jeopardizing the county's financial health. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Tom John. Uh, Tom John from Peapon District. I spoke roughly with this board last month. Well, I spoke for Christmas fest, and I think it would get better. I looked in a paper. The lawsuit continues about a four-year request. I come to the meetings. You're going on the third bump or so without minutes. I, I mean, that really is unacceptable. It should be unacceptable to the members of the board. Even when I sat on the electoral board, we were required to have the minutes up by the next, by the next meeting. So I mean, it, the whole thing doesn't look good. I spoke at a, I don't know, something one time, and there's a perception, there's what you think is right and what I think is right, and there's what's reality. I think this board needs to get in with the reality. We have more pressing problems than a freaking FOIA request. We've got the fire companies that need attention. There's other things that need attention besides this. And I hear that all our attention is going on in this FOIA request thing. It's absolutely crazy. This board needs to get into the swing of things, get rid of this FOIA request so it's not costing the taxpayers money. Do the job that you were elected to do, and it wasn't to boost your ego. It was to run this county the way it should have been run all along. Thank you.
Don't forget.
Don't forget. I appreciate the comments made both by Mr. Glenn and Mr. John. I think that particularly about the minutes, it's a good thing that you, you are getting on top of it. I don't know as a taxpayer that I can actually believe. I was told last month that it would only be a couple of weeks after the chairman there that the state, that those minutes would be taken care of and done. So there's a question about priority and follow-up, and I think it's a valid question. And what I'm seeing is I got no trust and I got no reason to trust. The process for parliamentary procedure requires, if you split a meeting, before you proceed into the second half of that meeting, you have to approve the minutes from the first half. That's part of parliamentary procedure. So whether it actually states that your next meeting, where you don't approve meeting, meeting minutes from the meeting before, is valid, there would be a reasonable question that you are conducting meetings outside of the parameters of legal parliamentary procedure. And you've done it now, going on four months. It's really, really not good, and Mr. John said the same thing. If you're legal enough, you hang on some time. You're gonna cost us more money. I really hope you can get this thing together. Like I said, I appreciate the fact that you are saying now that you want to have this done in another couple of days or a couple of weeks, but I don't have a lot of trust. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan.
John Sullivan, Hampton District. This is Lysinski. As somebody who knows, I'm mayor of the town of Washington. I am not speaking on behalf of the mayor or the government official. I'm speaking to someone who's had a homeless county for thirty years, taxpayer like everybody else in this room. And maybe because I love this county, as I think everyone does. The weather is fabulous. It's Christmas time. I have a slightly different perspective of law. I'd actually like to say thank you to you. First of all, I'd like to thank Candy Roth, who is, as everybody knows, is retiring. He's served this county for nineteen years, done extraordinarily well by most everybody's estimate. I'm sure there might be some may-sayers here, but my take is he's done an extraordinary job. And I'm not sure he's actually been thanked or acknowledged by, by anybody. And I just, she's been level-headed. She responds to people. I've dealt with her a number of times. She's thoughtful. She's considerate. And I'm willing to bet that once she's gone, there's been a lot of people who say, "We miss Candy Roth." So that's my observation there. The second observation is on the target of the month. Peter Luke, our county attorney. As everybody knows, Peter is stepping down, I guess technically at the end of this month. He has been a Commonwealth attorney. He's been county attorney. He's served this county and this, this town, this area, thirty years. I think by most people's take, he did an extraordinary job. I'm always amused when people say, "Oh, I keep Rappahannock as it is." But let's shill on John McCarthy and Peter Luke and the people who have kept this county as it is. I'm not. I apologize for the, for the unintended. I am sure Peter Luke has paid his respects. I'm sure everybody in this room has paid his respects. He has done his job well. He should be thanked. He should be appreciated. He should be loved. He shouldn't be ignored. And I would like to say, last but not least, at the risk of appearing to be some kind of sucker, I'd actually like to say thank you, Yuki. Maybe it's because I've been sitting behind one of those desks. I know what it's like to have lawsuits. I love it. You guys, as if you created lawsuits, you're the ones who caused them to come along. No, someone else did the lawsuit. So I'm a little, I guess, I don't agree with everything you did. I frankly think you should be more proactive than you are. I think there are a number of issues at debate that, you know, we might go back and forth on. I would disagree. But at no time have I believed that you don't have the best interests in this county. At no time do I think you behave irresponsibly. At no time do I think you've ever did anything that's, you know, breaking the law, criminal, whatever. And you guys should have the minutes done. I mean, a number of things that people say here I do agree with. I don't exactly think they're telling and how they present their criticism or suggestions is maybe conducive to a good conversation and collaboration. I think there's something, I'm happy to say thank you and then argue with one of you guys about something or other. They could do better than saying you're a bunch of jerks and then trying to get you to listen to them. So with that, those are the observations. Thank you very much.
I hope everybody has a good night. Mrs. Suss.
Gentlemen, here to ask for your support and to encourage you to vote yesterday to accept the revised contract that was presented for the easement on Jenkins property, which will allow us to move forward with building the memorial that will honor our ancestors that were displaced and Shenandoah National Park was created. We have one of your citizens who has very generously offered to donate the money for this project, and, you know, I think that it would be remiss if we let this opportunity pass this by. And I know that the board has many responsibilities, but stewardship is one of them. And I consider this to be a stewardship issue above all else. The stewardship of the community, of the history of this county, of the people that you represent is so much more. So please, I would strongly encourage you to consider voting yesterday to accept this revised contract that is on the agenda so that we can report. Thank you.
That's all the names of the people that were on the list. If anybody else here is speaking.
Yes. I'm Bill Henry. I am the founder and the president of the Board of Directors for the Blue Ridge Heritage Project. We conceived this idea for monuments in each of the eight counties. It was acquired for Shenandoah National Park about three and a half years ago. We incorporated it as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. The Board of Directors has been working to assist committees in each of the eight counties surrounding the park to get a monument built. So far, we have two completed monuments, Madison County and Alamo County. Green County has received final approval for theirs. They're waiting for a site plan. We have committees working in several other counties and two counties that really need to get started, so that's my job. But I'm here today to represent, to support the committee that's been working here in Rappahannock County. When I conceived of this project, I didn't want it to be a top-down project, but I wanted it to come from the bottom and work its way up. I wanted it to be grassroots. I wanted the people who are in each of the counties with their descendants or not to be involved in this project and to be a part of the planning and to be able to help get the funds raised and to make it happen, to make it come to life. And that's what's happened in both Madison County and in Alamo County and is beginning, and is happening right now in Green County. I would encourage the board to support the committee here because they are working really hard and to get to approve the amended agreement that you have for you, and I thank you very much.
Hey, anyone else here to speak?
Yes. Good afternoon. Robbie Settle, Ancho resident, lifelong resident of Rappahannock County. I'm here to address an issue of a contract proposal to compensate Rappahannock County for parking construction equipment on the Rappahannock County landfill in Amesville. It's called to my attention that the reasons were no good in the beginning. They were going to get their equipment closer to their job. The county was going to be compensated for the use of the land, some would be in theory. But before I wore a badge for eleven years, I worked for B-Doc. I was a road inspector. I worked in Northern Virginia and also this district for six years. After some digging, I found out that the reason the contractor was intent to put the equipment out here, because right now they're currently in Faulkner County. Faulkner County charges a heavy equipment storage tax or fee. They have to pay to store heavy equipment on the site. Rappahannock County does not have that. Culver County has that. So it's obvious to everyone in the room, if you can come up here and park your heavy equipment and not, and pay a minimal fee compared to what you usually pay, A, that's a no-brainer. B, it opens Pandora's box to every other contractor that has equipment to unpark in Rappahannock County. You say one start of all, it's how do you say no to anybody else? Who wouldn't jump on that? Financially, it makes sense. B, from a construction standpoint, I found out the road pavement design for that road, it's a double tarred chip with two inches of intermediate asphalt, which is not even fifty percent of the design of two-eleven or a primary road. And the equipment for the construction company being hauled are going to be off-road dump trucks, which are hauled on flatbed tractor-trailers. You're going to have excavators. You're going to have really heavy equipment on this road. And I'll give an example of, a negative example of not paying attention to this. Colvin Road in Culver County, it's a cut through from two-twenty-nine to two-eleven. Twelve to fifteen years ago, construction traffic picked up on the road, logging trucks from six-thirteen, construction trucks. Obviously, it's a shortcut. They don't have to go to two-eleven and take a left or a right at the light at two-twenty-nine and two-eleven. Well, in a matter of four to five years, the road started to fall apart because the pavement design was not sufficient to hold the loads of the trucks that were running on it. B-Doc came in, they would fix a patch here, they would fix a patch there. And a year's time, the patch would unravel, come apart, and they're back there. Well, eventually, the whole road came apart. It took them nine years to appropriate the funds to repave the road with the proper pavement design, sturdy enough to hold the construction equipment. And that was seven, eight years ago. So as tight as money is now, and as tight as state budgets and county budgets are now, if we allow heavy equipment on the landfill road in Amesville and the road starts to fall apart, we're not looking at five years anymore. We're looking at even longer. And who's going to pay for that? The taxpayers of Rappahannock County? You think B-Doc's going to pay for that? No, they're not. Do you think the construction company that did the damage to it's going to pay for it? By all means, no, they're not. And here again, I understand there's work, there's more commercial work being done in Page County, New Market area, over in the valley per se. If that's the case, and he wants to get closer to his work, then he needs to park his equipment on his own property in Sperryville, which he has ample room for, not in Amesville, which is the opposite direction of Page or Shenandoah Valley. And on another note, construction equipment. I live on a road. I've been around equipment. They have jake brakes. By law, they're required to use them unless, and a lot of small towns and counties have banned them inside-town limits. The last thing I want at eight-thirty at night or nine o'clock when my daughter's trying to go to sleep is a truck coming down the landfill road decelerating in front of my house with a jake brake on. And if anybody in this room knows how loud and obnoxious they are, and this county is apparently very conscientious about light pollution, noise pollution, air pollution, there's noise pollution right there, and it's worse. And we talk about transparency. Everybody up there at that table was elected to help the county, help the taxpayers. We elected you to do the right thing. The right thing may not always be what we like. I get that. I'm a realist. Doing this job, I get that one-hundred percent. I really do. But one thing I have learned in this job, as elected government officials, you need to be transparent with your constituents. And that, this board has shown that they are not transparent. It may be a policy. It may be a rule. But what I understand, there's been two closed-door contract meetings, contract session meetings on this landfill issue of parking the equipment there. That is nowhere near transparent. That's what we did thirty years ago to get things passed under the table. I know that's not your intent, but look from the outside in and tell everybody else what that was. The width of the road. Yeah, we have the, the double-axle trash trucks on the road now, and they are barely wide enough for a single lane. Most of the time, when trash trucks go down the road, if you are meeting them, you have to stop and pull over so they can get by because they go from yellow line to white line to edge of pavement. Now, you put a truck that's two feet wider than that, and then they say, "Okay, we'll mandate that they be restricted to landfill hours." Construction season is spring through fall, daylight to dark. If you have a project in Northern Virginia and you leave the jack, truck leaves the job at six o'clock, what time does it put it in Rappahannock County? Seven, seven-thirty, eight o'clock, well after landfill is closed. I just ask you, you need to look at the real reason why they're being asked to park the equipment there. And it's not to get closer to the equipment. You of all people know, how many major roads are being built for Rappahannock right now? How many are proposed in the next 10 years? We all know the answer to that. And the only other major road project was the Cleveridge Corner subdivision, which has been indefinitely suspended by the Culver County Board of Supervisors. So there is zero commercial work being done anywhere near the Rappahannock County landfill. Name is a proportion of it. None. So the part of them telling Ms. Kaiser that it's to get closer to their work, no, it's not. It's to avoid paying taxes. That's the price of doing business. Why should we let them avoid paying taxes? It's morally and ethically wrong to everybody else that does pay taxes in Faulkner and Culver County for heavy equipment.
We've got to picture.
That's all.
Anyone else care to speak?
Oliver.
Oliver here first, please.
I wanted to agree with John in...
Your name, Andrew?
Maybe go find him on this one. Is everybody still concerned about the hospital business? I would suggest, again, if you talk to the clinical and whatever. I think that if we want to have better government, this could be solved in a lot easier way than bringing suit against each individual member of the Board of Supervisors. A suit of suit could be brought against the board. It probably would be settled by now. If the court agreed, the board would have had an overseer, perhaps. And now, if that's your aim for better government, I believe in the way you go. It seems to me it's just something we want to punish people. I sit here and I read the Constitution of the United States and the people actually suggesting that people don't have the right to defend themselves. People are brought before a lawsuit and they're told, well, if you're very good, you better admit that you're guilty of something. Well, I don't believe that. I believe that you all have every right in the world to defend yourselves. And whatever it costs, that's fine with me. I find that the suit, I know a lot of people don't like the word, but I find that it is frivolous and causes, it's punitive. It's not, it's not trying to make for better government. It's just trying to punish you. So I support you in defending yourself. I wish you were a little bit more... I read that if one person says it costs $25,000 so far, another person says, a newspaper says $15,000, and someone says up to $100,000. So I think this idea of discussing litigation and letting us know what's happening is a good idea. So people have their facts. And my wife is on this tour where I'm hearing the same problem here. And I can understand it, but you guys don't defend yourself. You just don't defend yourself. You sit here and you listen to people say things. I read, well, the county attorney costs X amount of dollars or common law terms, possibly can be this much money. And names are stammering, but they don't talk about the state pays half of what the, of course, the county over half of what it costs the county. I don't think people know this. And I think it's up to you people to get that information out, to let people know, you know, that Mr. Garcia's salary is paid for partially by the state. It's not all lumped into the county budget. So I just wish you would look what's coming as it could use and let you, and defend yourself and win the cause. Thank you.
Because I would like to speak on, I have those land on the landfill road. I've got one thing that I would like to put to each of you that's going to be open on this. You all as property owners, homeowners, how would you like to be living on that road with that equipment that is to be used, whenever it's used? How would you like to live there and accept that notice? Would you think the same way as we think, that it shouldn't be allowed? That's all I've got to say, and I hope you consider yourself as in our position.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak?
I live on that road myself, and personally, we've had...
Your name, please?
Bill Settle. I live on that road. I've been there for 18 years. And I think with the landfill there, people come and use it and everything. We have enough traffic already on that road because I see the traffic go down every day. And if there's nobody, nobody sees a big trash truck coming down. And I think, you know, we take it in consideration.
Anyone else care to speak?
Kristy Kendall. I'm on the Board of the Blue Ridge Heritage Project with Bill Henry. And I'm also on the Rappahannock Committee with Kristy Sutton. And I'd just like to echo what both of them already said, urging you all to vote yes on the appeal because that's going to be later. Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak? Yeah.
Green Coleman, Amethon District. Here to support the decision to give a right to the landfill. Yes, support all ancestors. We can build up the world and it's starting soon.
Okay, anyone else care to speak? Yes.
Hello. I'm Joanna Cullinor. I'm also here to be the supporter of the Blue Ridge Heritage Project.
Anybody else? Anybody else care to speak? Okay, since there's no one else that cares to speak, anyone else want to speak?
Tom John, repeat. I might share a little, might help you make your decision on this monument thing. We had a gateway project in Sperryville, I don't know how many years we've done there. There was a, we had to put a bridge in across the Ford River there. We had to get property from B-Doc's and also Mr. Miller there. So the way that was handled, so it's an umbrella under the county policy, you could do any monuments the same way. You could, however, I'm not sure exactly how they did all the litigation on that, but you could umbrella that under the county, by taking possession of the property, you could umbrella that under the county insurance. If there's any doubt about doing that, you can look and see how that was handled. But there was two property owners involved in that situation. So any place you want to do a monument, you could surely do it. And there's precedent for it in the county if you go back to the Gateway Project and you look at that. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else care to speak? Anyone else? Player public comment, public.
I'm doing it. Mr. Chairman, a favor. I'm on the public, somewhere. Any opinions of public comment? Thank you. Simply an observation. I think one of the members of the public said something about the Board of Supervisors needing to get real, get into the reality. And my observation on reality, ladies and gentlemen, is we're at a tipping point. I, we hear things about the minute not getting done, finances being a hot mess, which I disagree with vehemently. I think if you rolled the tape back three years, you could say, yeah, finances were a hot mess. But I think our treasurer's office has done a magnificent job. And then we're about to have the treasurer's report, and I'll let the numbers speak for themselves. There's been a lot of debate about county attorney, deputy county attorney, and what that may cost us. Yet, no doubt, we live in a more litigious society and we're experiencing that and absolutely right. We did not bring this void case upon ourselves. We were sued. And we have every belief that will prevail. But we have a right to defend ourselves. Point being is, we have many people that are working many hours and are very dedicated in this county, whether, speaking of staff, that are at the tipping point. And there's really only so much that they can do. And I just want to put my observation forward, my personal opinion, that as we enter the budget season next year, if this is the way the citizenry feels, that we need more people or that we need to do a more timely job, that we need to get things done quicker and perhaps more efficiently, that we ought to have more staff. That we ought to have more staff. And you know what that means, ladies and gentlemen? That means tax increase. So those of you all that are there that may be saying, well, you know, we don't like the job you're doing because it's not done quick enough or it's not done well enough. We can fix that, but out of the other side of the mound, sometimes we hear, don't touch my taxes. And that's exactly what you're asking for. Because I think, I'm of the opinion that things are running pretty gosh darn efficiently. So I know many may beg, some may beg to differ. You could always be doing things better, but maybe be careful what you ask for because I really think we're at a tipping point here. That's what you're telling me. And I think we, we can't beat the horses any harder and make them go any faster. We just need more horses. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I just want to say if this job isn't needed, go, push down, not we are.
Okay, any other comments, gentlemen? I'd like to skip ahead a little bit in the program since we've got a young lady here that has a baby. It might need to come in here. Molly Peterson from the Farm Show update.
I asked Molly to be here. I asked Molly to be here because she did manage the farm tour this year. And as you know, we put a lot of importance on our open land and our farm and our farmers and our comprehensive plan. And this was an opportunity for her to present to us how the meeting went this year. And this is the one program that we as a county support our farmers. So with that, I'll turn it over to Molly.
I'm Molly Peterson.
Yeah, I would say Molly. These are for you.
And you have cameras in there. Where do you want me to stand? So I've been in Rappahannock County since 2008. And professionally, I'm a photographer and a farmer. And it seems a little counterintuitive, but if you miss a meeting, which is a county farm tour meeting, they vote you chair. So that's how I got that job this year. And I don't think that makes sense, but apparently that was, everyone was on board. So, um, so one of the things that I liked, you know, I thought about doing the chair position, but then I did ultimately say, yes, I want to do that. And one of the reasons why is because I love marketing and I love farming, and those two go together. I also love this county and sharing it with people. I don't know if you had a chance to go on the tour this year, but we have some really neat people in this county. We have some really creative, caring people who just want to grow good food or raise fiber animals to knit beautiful sweaters. You know, there are all sorts of things that we have here. So when I looked at being the chair this year, I am self-employed times two. So I'm pretty full as it is, and we do now have a baby, so that just added on to that. But I was looking at the way that the farm tour, so this year was the eighth year. The first four years, it was a county tourism effort. And then I was at that meeting where it was kind of like the county said, well, now we're going to let you farmers do it. So it was kind of tossed up. And then Kathy Schiff, if you know her, took it over for the next three years and bless her heart, pretty much did it single-handedly. The last year was the first time I kind of came in at the 11th hour and I got sort of an idea of what was going on with this effort. If you're not familiar, since it isn't a county effort anymore, it's just a bunch of us volunteers deciding that we have extra time to do this. And what we do is we market to the community and the surrounding area to come visit our farms. So one of the main things that I did this year, and I do have a record for all of you, and I'll give you a copy to put on the board documents, is since marketing is my thing and visual is my thing and people that are visiting respond visually and social media-wise, is I, actually, I had this idea in my head, I can't draw to save my life. We needed a logo. We needed a brand. We needed to put something, a stamp on this county farm tour event to say, this is us and this is what we're proud of and look at what we can present to all of you. So, and if you didn't see them around, I do have some, this is our little logo. I can pass this around too. I could see it in my head. And then what we were going for in the early meetings was, how do we brand this county and kind of the essence of the county? And what kept coming to me was deeply rooted, deeply rooted. This county's been, I mean, 1833, right, officially founded? And it's always been in agriculture. So how do we start to bring that back? Because yes, there's new agriculture and there's old agriculture and there's all sorts of ways of doing agriculture and showing it off. But the fact is, we all eat. Everyone eats. Nobody's immune from that. So how do we support those in our county that do that? So I saw this visual in my head and I, again, I can't draw, so I made a horrible, horrible sketch. And I went to Gail Croftmell, who's over at Four Collingbird's Gallery, it's right next to the Inn at Little Washington, who is a beautiful artist. And I gave her this sketch and I said, can you make us a logo? She said, oh, gosh, I don't make logos, but maybe I'll give it a try. And she made me this beautiful 11 by 14 canvas. She made two copies, actually. She painted them different colors in case I had a preference. And in exchange for that, we gave her an ad in the book that we made, and that's all she wanted. So, so the first thing that I wanted to do was make sure we started to brand this event. So people in Northern Virginia and here would see this little stamp and know this was Rappahannock County. So if you can't see, I will pass it around. It's got apple trees and chicken and carrots and everything, and with roots going deep into the ground. Because that, to me, was Rappahannock County. It wasn't, it wasn't a digitally, you know, fancy logo. It was hand-drawn, which I also think is really important to this county because it was based in art and agriculture and kind of the creative process. So with that, what we did this year is, we have this guidebook. We printed 5,000 copies this year. We've distributed most of them. And so for five, we printed 5,000 this year. Last year, we printed 2,000. And I got it done for the same amount of money, by the way, because we switched printers. So what we wanted, our intention with this guidebook was to highlight our agricultural venues. We focused this year on just farm venues, but we also realized that there were some important venues that played a role in our agriculture and our tourism, which was our coffee roasters, our distillers, our brewers. So they're kind of incorporated in there too. We wanted to make it inclusive. We also have a lot of our restaurants in here, and there are some plans that we want to incorporate them more next year. You know, if they source locally. We want people to know that. That's important. That their neighbors, I call it the cross-pollinating campaign, that their neighbors, they're buying from their neighbors. So we printed these guidebooks and we distributed them all around the region, into DC, locally. We wanted it to be a little evergreen. We knew we'd have a little extra, so it'll go to the visitor's center. It'll go to the real estate offices, and people can use that and say, what's going on in Rappahannock County? What can you do here? You know, what farms do we have and what are they, what are they doing? Who are, what are they growing? So that was a big thing, was the guidebook. We really pushed social media this year, and it had a lot of, it had a lot of draws. We took this guidebook before the event and we put it online in a PDF version. People could flip through. And that had, I wrote it down here. It had, so in the month of September, our website received almost 3,000 visitors alone. And then the guidebook had 1,344 views. So that could be locally, that could be beyond, but people did look at this and they did come to this county. A lot of the feedback I got from our venues this year was, this is what people... A lot of the feedback I got from our venues this year was, "That was the most people that we ever had," which is great, because I was really nervous, because you never know, you know, if you build it, will they come? But people actually came. We had beautiful weather, people were excited about it, and the hope is that people learn from our farms and continue to come back to our farms, you know, whether they come out on the weekends or they find one of the farm drops in the city, or if they look up, you know, maybe they sell elsewhere. But that was the intention overall, was to just promote this educational experience. We also wanted all of our venues to provide some sort of educational experience, so people would be interested. You know, kids get bored really easily, and sometimes adults do too. Oftentimes, adults do too. So this year, we had seventeen venues and two special stops. One special stop was the visitor's center, the other was the Inn at Little Washington's Village Market, because that was new this year, and that did highlight our local farms as well. This is a hundred percent volunteer run, so we had incredible amount of volunteers this year, and next year, we're going to more clearly define the roles and focus on that a little bit. We did, so we raised approximately ten thousand dollars locally, fifteen hundred of which came from the county of Rappahannock, thank you. Our expenses were right around eight thousand dollars, which means we have a jump going into next year, which is really exciting. In previous years, we haven't, which means a lot of the early funding comes out of our volunteer pockets until we can be reimbursed, and that's not okay. So I wanted to make sure that next year, that didn't happen. So it, I think overall, I heard great feedback from the event. There's a lot of them for improvement. One of the things that it's kind of gray area, since it's just a bunch of volunteers doing this for fun, is it raised, there's some gray area there, and that's something I think we all need to, the committee needs to sit down and talk about. Does it need to become its own nonprofit? Should it be umbrellaed under one of the current nonprofits in the county, if anyone wants to take it on? Should it become its own business? Because I do think it has a lot of potential to promote this county and all of the people that we have here doing really great things. So there's a whole lot more information here, and it will be on the board docs, so you guys can all read through that, and you can always email me or call me, and I'll talk about it, because I love to talk about it. But I think overall, it was a great, it was a great event, and our venues, I think, were very happy, so.
Do you know how many, I don't know how many people came to visit?
We're not sure. That's one of the things, we tried to have volunteers at every venue this year to keep track, and it didn't happen as efficiently as we had hoped. But again, a lot of the venues, most of them said, "Gosh, I think we had double what we have last year." So it's not an exact number. I had really, really hoped to have more of a grasp on that number, but I think that's one of the things for next year, we can really, maybe we have clickers, or we have more, we need volunteers, more volunteers at each venue to really help us keep track of everything. So, I have all of these for all of you.
Any questions?
Yeah, does anyone have any questions?
I just wanted to say thank you, Molly. You did a great job. I think it's a wonderful presentation of the county to the world outside of us, and I want to say thank you to Mike for allowing you to have the time to do it.
He did allow that. And if anyone wants to see what you look like, I'll leave them kind of on a front bench and you're welcome to grab them, but, and share them with your friends and visitors, because it's not just an outside county tourism event, it's also an internal, like, pride event, because we have great neighbors and we want to make sure we support them so they can all stay here and keep doing what they're doing, so.
With that, Molly, I know from working with you, how much time and effort that you put into this, and I certainly appreciate it. We have a resolution for you, if you don't mind, I'd like to read it.
Okay, thanks.
It says, "Whereas Molly Peterson has given unsophishly of her time, talent, and passion toward the mission and objective of the Rappahannock County Farm Tour for the benefit of Rappahannock County and its citizens. And whereas Molly Peterson worked diligently to provide the leadership, creativity, and resourcefulness with the support of her Farm Tour Committee for another successful year. And now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Rappahannock County that we do hereby publicly thank you, Molly, for your chairmanship of this year's tour. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the menopause of the Board of Supervisors of Rappahannock County, and that a presentation copy be provided to you with suitable ceremony, respect, and appreciation from the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors and all of its citizens." So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next time, with the accounts, treasurer perform.
For those of you that may not be aware, today is the last day to pay your taxes. So if you haven't done so, you may want to visit your treasurer on the way out the door. The county treasurer's report shows that as of November thirtieth, we have collected cash in the amount of five thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars, five million eight twenty-five, three oh two, compared to last year of four million five eleven two thirty-six. That's a difference of one million three fourteen oh sixty-five. And as we talked about last month, a lot of that is due to the fact that we approved the budget early and got the tax bills out earlier. Our budget is on target at five months as we're into the new year. December is the halfway mark, so in January, we'll be providing reports to all of our departments for the budgeting.
Any accounts payable?
Our accounts payable report online. Our accounts payable for the month, November two hundred six thousand two thirty-one sixty-eight.
Motion.
If no one has any questions about the bills, I'll make a motion that we pay our bills.
Second. Any motion made to pay the accounts? Motion seconded, all those who favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Now appropriation for associate.
It has been a number of years that Melissa Cupp has been the county attorney, or has been the attorney, not county attorney, sorry, for Social Services, and this has been in the budget of the county attorney from a long time ago, so this is an opportunity to put it in the right bucket so that we can account for it. So as of today, the balance is seven thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-four cents. This would be transferred out of the county attorney budget and transferred to a new line that was created under Social Services, who is the one that works with the attorney and works with the services that are provided. So that new accounting number would be one hundred dash four oh five three oh one dash three zero zero one zero 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 dash zero zero zero. So this is putting it back to the right source, and this has been requested by Beth Dunkert and Peter Luke, and it's a good time to do it with Peter, with Taryn.
Well, we're not doing anything other than the transfer.
Correct, that's right.
Well, in the accounts payable, though, I just noticed, I was a little bit late on it, and since we're talking about that same line item, there's a litigation clause for Mr. Luke for over ten thousand dollars. Do we have a breakdown in that?
I don't have it with me. It was about three thousand dollars for the previous two years, and then the rest of it was for this year. I couldn't get that for you, but I don't have it with me.
I'm going to need that. Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? I'll make a motion to go up to this line item.
Have a motion to transfer?
I'll second Mr. Chairman.
A motion made in seconds, and we have someone in the audience that wanted to make a comment, will you object to that?
I don't.
You don't?
Your discretion, sir. Just for information, if you're not aware, within the county budget you approved, there was a line item for this within the county attorney, which you reduced by eleven thousand dollars when you increased Mr. Luke's to full-time. So the line did exist, it was separate, whatever, how that misses with the accounting, but there was a line there, removing that line as well?
The line that was created is in the Social Services.
Yeah, I understand, this line is under his, but there was a line there for Social Services legal support.
Right.
So it's confusing exactly what amount of money is going with that or what. Some of the monitors, the Excel spreadsheet, glorious detail.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Presentation, Mr. Nesbit from V-Dot-Mark.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chairman.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I don't really have a presentation, I do have a copy, submitted a report earlier to the board review, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it yet, but not a whole lot of report this month. We are gearing up to winter snow, we do have a very good chance of freezing. Free set tonight, if anyone's prepared for that, possibly in some of the upper elevations. But we are fully prepared for snow season this year. We are, after, first of the year, we'll be starting, working on Rolling Road, it's our next project after a little luster, starting that up, getting that road prepared for treatment over the summer, but we're doing the grading operations and bringing it forth on Rolling Road. Also, may have an opportunity to get a mountain road later on in the year, but most likely go to the fall, we're going to start on that mountain. Currently don't have any, any bridge projects underway, we did complete a bridge repair project on Fodderback Road, and that creates a concern for traffic in the fall, because the river was finished right up, so that time, project over in Flint Hill on five twenty-two is complete, that's completed at home time also. We do have some resurfacing going on, as you may be aware of, on five twenty-two, heading up to Chindal Park, it's a resurfacing, really a resurfacing on five twenty-two above Flint Hill. And we'll have some, next, I will be seeing you, a report was shown about resurfacing progress for next year, and I will be more happy to be able to go to the board and answer any questions about that, combinations, plant mix, projects, and some surface treatment projects. Don't really have any outstanding traffic even here, studies at this time. We did recently completed, have a new column or new section in our monthly report about safety and operational improvements. We have a small amount of money, an additional bit of money that the residency was given to do small projects in each county, this is outside of the six-year, secondary six-year plan. So I would offer, and I work with Ms. Kaiser, to develop a project that are, we did complete a project on Route six one seven, on Mountain Road, where we just, we had a very narrow section of the road, narrow down to the steep bank on one side, probably twenty-five, thirty-foot steep bank on one side, a rock bank on the other, so we were able to use some of those funds to widen about thirty, four hundred foot section of that road, to enable two vehicles to get by and shift traffic over from that other side. So we completed that recently. We're all looking at Route two eleven and the area of Tiger Valley Road. We have, we do have site distance in that area, but there are some, in the median of two eleven, there are some mounds of dirt that, if y'all have noticed, that we're looking at possibility of lowering those, maybe some of those to improve site distance in that intersection. And we're also looking at Route two eleven and five twenty-two, that intersection, turn lanes, the right turn lane, northbound right turn lane on two eleven and five twenty-two, looking at extending that one, improving that one, it's really a very short right turn lane, and also the left turn lane on two eleven on to five twenty-two towards Flint Hill, looking at extending that, that turn lane, it is a short left turn lane. So those are some of the projects that we're looking at for those safety and operational improvements, and also I'm glad to hear from the board if they have any, board members, if you have any suggestions for small projects that we can do with our forces to improve these spot improvements in various places. So I would offer that. We will begin our secondary six-year plan cycle again, after the first of the year, I'll be meeting Ms. Kaiser, going to get the ball rolling, probably a lot of money to add any additional projects, but we'll see what we have, and we'll start that process in January, February, I think after the board, if you're public hearing, maybe type them. With that, I can offer up any questions that the board may have.
I have a question. I have a family who has property on the corner of six oh four and seven oh seven, and would like, their house is on one side of seven oh seven, and they now own the barn on the other side, and curious about having a sign put up indicating that their children might be crossing seven oh seven. Children have played from the house to the barn to give a little safety to their family. Is that something that can be approved for? I know this is kind of short notice, I'm looking at it, but.
We looked in that area, is that seven oh seven, we looked in that area, we did put in some warning, we put in some warning signs, we had a request from a property owner, it was the same one, but we did, I think we did put in some warning signs, not children have played, not children have heard warning signs in that area. We are going through the, with the county on some children have played signs, not terms exactly like that, but some warning signs for pedestrian children have played on five twenty-two in the Woodville area, we're going through that, that should be happening in the near future. We can start to look at that, see if that's something that's applicable to that location. Yeah, I appreciate that.
Any other question?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Nesbit for the fast work on that Long Mountain Road project that you mentioned. That was, I think, ninety or a hundred and twenty days from first time we came out there to look at it, to when the work was done, it got done before the bad weather came, and I know all the neighbors are very appreciative of that, so, big improvement. Thank you. As long, as well as the area you mentioned of Tiger Valley and two eleven, there's stop signs there now, and it looks like it's a much safer intersection, I'm happy to hear you may be shaving some of those dirt mountains down too. Anything we can do to help that intersection? Appreciate it.
Yes.
I don't know if it's appropriate, I'm building a little dairy road, and earlier in the year, when we had a really, really heavy rains, a portion of dairy road got washed out on the right-hand side, and about three or four months ago, somebody from V-Dot came and said that they were starting to work on that, and they might park property, equipment on the path of my property, it was fine, but nothing's happened. We've had those orange barrels sitting there, like, he has to the road, the culvert, you know, river runs underneath the road, and the culvert on the door side completely washed away, so there's nothing there supporting the road, and they, I wondered if that was any, on anybody's agenda.
Culvert, is that so?
Dairy road.
Dairy road.
Yeah.
I'll start to check with the super superintendent after this meeting.
Because they did say that they were going to work on it, and then... park property, uh, equipment on the path of my property, it was fine, but nothing's happened, we've had those orange barrels sitting there like the heads of the road, the culvert, you know, river runs underneath the road, and the culvert on the door side completely washed away, so there's nothing there supporting the road, and they, I wondered if that, if that was any, on anybody's agenda.
Culvert, is that so?
Dairy road.
Dairy road.
Yeah.
I'll sort of check with the super superintendent after this meeting.
Because, uh, they did say that they were going to work on it, and then basically the engineer came back and said, this is more difficult than I thought, we're going to have to take a long time, but it's been eight or nine months since those heavy storms, and we have those two orange barrels sitting there, and they've been there for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
To retirement allowance?
For those of you that may not know, this is Beverly Dumpford, who has been our Director of Social Services, and her last date is December thirty-first, and we would be remiss to let her slip out the door without publicly saying thank you, so we certainly appreciate all that you've done for the county in your many years, and I have a resolution here for you that says, whereas inasmuch as Beverly Dumpford was hired April first nineteen eighty-seven, and serves as Director for the Ratahanet County, Virginia Department of Social Services, whereas Mrs. Dumpford has provided outstanding leadership and guidance to the citizens of Ratahanet County, be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors, we do hereby publicly thank Beverly Dumpford for her long and distinguished service, and wish her good health and best wishes for the future. Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Um, as mentioned earlier, Mr. Luke is retiring at the end of the month, and he couldn't be here today, and, uh, we're awfully glad that Mr. Ball could be with us at this first meeting, but we did want to take the time to read the resolution for Mr. Luke, which we will present to him later, but whereas Mr. Luke faithfully and with honor, integrity, and great distinction served as both Commonwealth Attorney and County Attorney since January first nineteen eighty-four, whereas Mr. Luke has provided outstanding leadership and guidance to the Board of Supervisors and public service to the citizens of Ratahanet County, and now therefore be it resolved that Ratahanet County Board of Supervisors formally acknowledges and extends its profound appreciation to Mr. Luke for his long and distinguished years of service, and wishes him and his family good health and best wishes for the future.
Hey, Simon, Davisville Fire and Rescue, request for workers' compensation for the fire and rescue association. And this is...
Uh, J.B. Carter.
Oh, okay.
Now, Mr. Chairman, let's skip this part here.
I went from three to four.
Mark, let's take that side.
Okay, we, we have, we have any comments?
Uh, J.B. Carter, from Davisville Fire and Rescue, uh, in an effort to move along the workers' compensation as soon as possible for a volunteer in Ratahanet County, uh, Fire and Rescue Association voted to go ahead and fund the, uh, amount ourselves, which pay back from the county later in the year when they have the money, I know you were talking about having to borrow money to pay for workers' compensation, or it was going to delay us getting our workers' compensation until maybe July of, uh, two thousand seventeen. And our request right now is that we go ahead and pay forward, um, right now Davisville offered to pay for the entire amount for the association with a payback later on when you have the money. Right now is the workers' compensation policy for a one-year premium is forty-seven thousand fifty-three dollars, um, and that's to cover a hundred and eighty-five volunteers in the fire and rescue system from our seven companies. They can do a prorated, uh, regular insurance, uh, policy, or medical insurance policy, the one that you upgraded to a half million dollars for us, that comes due on July the nineteenth of two thousand seventeen. They can also do a prorated policy where the prorated policy would expire on July nineteenth two thousand seventeen, and that prorated policy is twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars, um, that would only get us coverage from basically when we write the policy in December until the, uh, expiration of our current medical policy. And again, it's up to the board on what, what they want to do, and if we do the full policy, it goes from December to December, um, that means that the policy wouldn't come due again until December of two thousand seventeen, um, that's when tax monies would, they've already come in, um, and that would cut our medical insurance in half, you take the medical insurance in July, when we normally do our renewal for our medical insurance, and the workers' comp will become due December, so that might give you some relief as far as monies and tax returns, uh, if that's concerning. Again, our recommendation right now is to go with a full-year payment, um, we've got bids from two different organizations, uh, both organizations will pay a thousand dollars to one another for the, um, workers' compensation insurance for the hundred and eighty-five people, uh, and our current, uh, insurer is, you know, is one that bidded on it, and we had a second bid from another company. Again, the money would be borrowed right now, um, Davisville offered to borrow, to lend the money to the county until such time that they have finances to pay us back, uh, that way the county doesn't have to go and borrow money from interest, from, from, uh, other institutions, and again, trying to get our workers' comp as soon as possible for our volunteers, we have some volunteers who are, um, very antsy about responding on calls right now because of the lack of workers' comp insurance, and we're trying to allay their fears as well on, on that concern.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could say, this is a great thing that you're doing on behalf of the volunteers, but do you have the support of the, the support of the fire association and the company for this?
Yes, we voted on it, the Fire and Rescue Association, to bring it forward.
And after all that's happened, you still trust the county?
That's the problem. I mean...
I don't say that lightly.
Well, again, that, that's part of the reason to bring it in front of this body, so that they would prove it, it's on the record, and they would approve the payback when they get the money, and we've been told that July one would probably be the date when that would happen, when the new budget here came down, so... It's either that or we go out and buy it on our own anyway, so I would prefer that we go in together with all the other companies and, and get our insurance and have the county pay us back when they get the money.
I certainly support it.
Any other comments, gentlemen?
Uh, so, Mr. Carter, is this, is this, uh, how would this affect the medical insurance then, so, we, we had talked about setting money aside for up to a million dollars in the medical, I'd take it that that's not as critical any longer?
Right now, it's not a half. There's a half a million dollar insurance policy, medical, covered for the volunteers.
Right.
Um, that's our primary policy, it's two, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar policy is what it is, but, um, that's our primary insurance policy right now. Once we go to workers' comp, the workers' comp will be our primary medical insurance policy, the medical insurance that we carry right now, the half a million dollars, will become a secondary. The county should see a rebate on the remaining months, since those are no longer the primary policies, they're secondary policy, the insurance company should do a rebate for the remaining months of that policy on a half a million dollars, so there should be some, some cost savings associated with that as well, there should be, you know, a rebate from the insurance company, according to Bobby Mutton, our current insurance agent. So once that becomes, the workers' comp becomes a primary policy, then those other two policies become a secondary.
So, I, am I correct in hearing that there's been some discussion about, uh, the county attorney on capping the county's exposure, uh, amount, uh, it was proposed to contribute for workers' compensation, or my, uh, my mix and metaphors here?
I don't know, I think that, that...
Oh, I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
No, no, that, that's something that, that I discussed with Debbie, was, uh, if, if, as the number of claims go up, the, the premiums are going to go up, and, and what kind of controls would the, the county have over that, so if, if by, you know, if there's like twenty-five claims in one year, is that going to take this policy from forty-eight thousand to three hundred thousand, and we got no control over that, that's something that we probably needed to look at, I think, that's something Debbie and I discussed, but we didn't discuss it with, uh, with, uh, Mr. Carter or any of the other chiefs, that was something that had to happen in our view.
Given that, I guess we'd be, are we going to have to vote on this today? Just an action item, I would be, I mean, they're going to start this insurance tomorrow.
They want to move forward, so...
Don't, don't we have to have the conversation about the liability, potential liability to the county if the, if the policy goes up in the future, or is that something that we can look at every, every year?
I think you'd have to look at it every year, because obviously everything's going to be so...
All right, so this is, this is... We're just looking at one year and initially looking at one year.
Right, and what happens next year is going to depend on, at my mind, I think probably number of claims, and let's, let's hope that there's not a lot of claims that will change, but that's just something I wanted to put in Debbie's, in Debbie's ear about, is that, you know, these kind of workers' compensation things can, can get rather expensive.
But I see how you could cap something, I mean, if you please...
Well, my question...
Where you kept the county's, uh, contribution for the cost, but...
That, that was maybe, that was one of the issues that, that I was raising with Debbie, was, was whether or not the county was going to be willing to pay a hundred percent of it, or was, was there going to be a limitation as to how much the county would pay as far as if the, if the premiums started to grow exponentially, but there's something that...
I understand your concern, but that's a policy decision to start with, and secondly, whatever we do with the volunteers is cheaper than career.
Okay, well, that's, it was simply something I want, I wanted to ask Debbie about, because, uh, I've seen these type of things, policies get really, really expensive, and on the number of claims, was that something that had been addressed, uh, with, with, you know, in consideration of this, so that was my concern, uh, addressed to Debbie.
But it's still, regardless of, of whether it's, uh, hypothetical or not, it's still cheaper than career.
Is what?
It's still cheaper than career, if we have to go career, we'd have to pay it anyway, and we wouldn't have the volunteers.
Well, I wasn't taking any position on career at all, without...
I'm just, I'm just, I know, but if we start talking about capping their insurance coverage, then we may lose them, and we're going to career, which is going to be exponentially more expensive than that insurance thing that we just discussed.
Well, I...
Because if, if they're not covered, they're not going to run, I wouldn't do it. That's, that's the policy part of it, that if, if we don't cover them, they ain't running.
I think it, it was kind of my desire to bring up the, the realistic possibility that as claims go up, so does the price, not to, not to say one, one way or the other, whether it should, should...
No, I, I understand where you're going, but, but no matter what that price would turn out to be, it's still less than career.
Well...
Are you going to make a motion?
I would put that in the form of a motion, yes, that we, we support this proposal, we think that by July one. Second, I...
Can we change that to like July the tenth, I don't know what day July first falls on and getting...
Well, the first, the first meeting in July.
Exact, exact date, are we?
First meeting in July is...
First business meeting in August.
We would need to approve it that day.
First business meeting in July should be, should be good. Necessarily need to set a date to pay it back, we can just say we will, and that necessarily seem to be fine with that.
It could be ten years, or...
No, I, I think we have to...
I need for a date on that.
The date would help with the process.
Yeah, I think we need a hundred plus.
We'll have a motion in a second, and we have a date set.
They, they need, they need the date, gentlemen, we've got the pay to dues.
What is the date, what's the date of your...
The first business meeting in July.
Okay, because I'm the, I'm the slow one at the table here, so what is the actual amount of dollars we're talking about putting forward here between now and whatever date we decide in July, is that, is that what's on the table now, or are we actually talking about from a December to the December, uh, money?
No, I...
It was December to December, it was forty-seven thousand fifty-three.
Fifty-three, yes.
And that, and that motion was for the entire first year?
For the full year.
Okay.
That way you divide your payments up between six months, so next year's payment would come due on December, after the taxes have started to come in, so...
I only have two more questions. But the hundred and eighty-five, how did, that's on a point system, correct?
That's on a point system, each volunteer had to obtain at least thirty points during the year as far as activity to be covered, um, and most of the, and some of the departments, that's the minimum amount that they need in order to actually stay a member, um, and again, most of the departments have confirmed that number is a, a true number for the more active, at least they're mentally active people, so those people have responded to ten to fifteen calls a year, are covered just as well as those that respond to a hundred or more.
And, and in the spirit of the conversation earlier about burdening the county with oversight responsibilities, how does, how does the policy, who administers the policy, in other words, who keeps track of, not necessarily the points, because none of the chiefs, I guess, do that, but is, if there's a claim, or if there's administrative duties, does the association take responsibility for that, individual companies will have a representative?
The individual company takes their claim to the insurance agent, uh, Armitral Insurance is, who we currently have our insurance with, and if that's the insurance agent we pick, then that's who administer all the claims.
Okay, so...
They take care of all the paperwork, all the paper trails, the county government's not responsible for any, uh, insurance company is, is the one that does all of that.
But the, the claims out of Flin, uh, out of Castleton, and Castleton will work with Armitral?
That's correct.
As opposed to the...
It's a direct payer system from, from the insurance company to the, to the claimant.
Do you have any, probably don't have, or Mr. Button give you any idea what the savings was going to be, that, that you made off of it?
That, that's determined on the date that we institute the policy, then they would have to calculate out the remaining days on that policy to, to, to do the payback on the, on the primary policy that you have now.
Is this having some of the money that we voted on last month to, um, potentially appropriate for something like this?
Well, we now have, because we advertised, we now have permission that we could spend it, but they're going to pay for it until the first of the year, so we can put it in the budget for next year.
Okay, so, we're not using those monies, we're going to be paying them back on the FY eighteen budget in, in July, but they're going to pay for the entire year now?
Correct.
Right.
And you have the money to do that?
December to December.
I, I did have one question, on the point system, that includes your volunteers, um, that run calls, and then the volunteers that do other things.
That's correct.
Or...
So is the workers' comp just covering those that are running calls, or is this...
No, it covers all members who were, I mean, culprit...
That's sort of cooking hamburgers and all that same.
Right, if you, if you, you get burnt by the deep fat fire, you fall off a ladder, I mean, that's what the emphasis for culprit of the county, get workers' comp for their volunteers, this gentleman who was doing work on the fire station, fell from the ladder and suffered a severe head injury, so, and he was just a, he was an administrative member, but stuff they do in around the station is just as important, running calls, because they can be building, running, and keep our paperwork going as well, fundraisers, stuff.
Yeah, my question, a point, is that an hour?
Um, usually a point is equated to two hours of service time, or a point is, is one call, or two hours of any service time, training, administrative duties, um, fundraisers, things of that nature.
All right, any other questions, gentlemen?
Well, I want to thank J.B. in the name of Davisville Fire Department for taking the initiative to get this thing rolling, um, unfortunately, government quite often, uh, gets caught up in all the details and, and we're slow, so I thank you for, uh, getting it rolling for all our volunteer fire departments and rescue squads, I think it's important and, uh, and that expedited the whole process, so, thank you, J.B.
Okay, then, we have a motion on the table, we have a second, we have a, since this involves all bills, we're going to have a roll call vote. Mr. Frey.
Aye.
Mr. LeDenz.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
And I myself.
Aye.
And I myself. Now, we have the pleasure of a guest that's with us here tonight, Mr. Patrick Maughan, who's from the Ratt, Hattie Rattigan Regional Planning Commission, and he's the new executive director, and he stepped in with both feet on the floor. Right. Patrick, you're ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Welch, and for the board, for the opportunity. Uh, my name is Patrick Maughan, as Mr. Welch said. I was appointed as the executive director of the Rattigan Rattigan Regional Commission this past April, uh, planning Mr. Nine, uh, moving up my elements. Um, I wanted to just a few minutes today to introduce myself, and kind of go through some of our priority and focus areas that we're working on, um, offer my information to you, um, and my service to you at the board, within the county, um, on items that we, that we're working on, on behalf of you. Um, our board is a twenty-one member board, we are made up of eight counties, or five counties and eight towns, area region, Culpeper, Rattigan, Acapulco, Madison, and Orange, um, and in eight towns therein. Uh, the largest of those jurisdictions have two appointed members to our board, and the smallest, if you pull a thirty-five-hundred population, you get one appointed member. Uh, so we have twenty-one members, uh, members from Rattigan County are Mr. Welch and Mr. Kaiser, and then Mayor Sullivan is appointed from the town of Washington, also serves on our board as well. Now, we have a work plan that we develop every year, um, our board reviews those priority and focus areas, um, ahead of our budget process, um, before July one, um, reviews those annually, and tries to target the areas that we want stack to focus on throughout the year, and looking into the future. Um, I think the current set of priorities was first developed about ten years ago, has been reviewed, there's been a couple that dropped off at that time, uh, but we've been able to, as well, we'll get a little bit into those in just a minute. Um, our budget for fiscal year seventeen, which we're right now, is just over one million dollars, um, of that money. Fourteen percent comes from local dues, um, we assess a cap per capita rate of eighty-three cents, um, and we see on that slide that Rattigan County has increased to six thousand and three dollars, and in the town of Washington, one hundred and six dollars, uh, this, this fiscal year, um, and our board has authorized that rate to stay flat, um, for fiscal year eighteen, just for information. Um, you can see the largest portion of our budget, um, from revenues is transportation based, and we have a lot of, um, funding that services transportation, and it's not just VDOT related transportation, we have several other programs that I mentioned as well. Um, you can see expenses, uh, we've had some grants that have come in, which has left our expenses below our revenues right now, which is a good condition to be at, being for this year. Um, about four-hundred-and-fifteen thousand of our expenses are pass-through related to grant monies that we receive, um, and that we have every year, um, some that are year-over-year, some that are one-time grants that we receive. Um, we're approved for seven and a half full-time equivalent employees, um, which right now we have six, and we have one physician being advertised right now, and we expect to fill that at the beginning of the year. So you can see our four program areas there, um, environmental and natural resources planning, transportation, housing and homelessness, uh, continuum of care coordination in the region, regional tourism, hazard mitigation planning and emergency preparedness, um, and then the last bullet, data collection and technical assistance. I've listed three other initiatives at the bottom, which I'll briefly touch on at the end, just that are sort of, um, one-time initiatives that we're working on right now. Um, first bullet there, environmental and natural resources, um, we have, the three programs I wanted to highlight there are, um, regional TMDL development, uh, which is total maximum daily load, then is, um, polluted streams in the region, if they're tested by DEQ, um, at the state level, there's often money available to go in and identify, uh, strategies to reduce those pollutants, watching about nitrogen, phosphorus, things of that nature. Um, the regional commission serves as sort of the front end, we do the planning process, convene stakeholders, um, identify some of those strategies, and then backend is where your agricultural producers, your farmers, um, and landowners can access money through the soil and water conservation district, the best cost your money, um, to institute best management practices. So the planning process takes place first, that's where we come in, the big money comes in later, and that usually runs through the soil and water conservation district. Um, in twenty-fifteen, uh, we released a farm and food system plan for the region, um, this is a process that went through, um, stakeholder focus groups in the region, um, outreach to farmers, did some surveying on-site, um, with some farmers in each of the counties, and developed a list of nine strategies, um, mostly designed to, um, support the region's agriculture economy, we heard the presentation Mr. Peterson gave on the farm tour, um, there are a lot of ideas in my head going off to tie into the farm and food system plan we have, I'll make sure to, um, be in touch with throughout the year. Um, right now, what that is, the first thing that that has done is, uh, we formed a regional food policy council, there's an appointment from each county, and then six technical area appointees to that council, um, that are sort of overseeing, uh, a grant that we just received to do some promotion, local food promotion at the regional level. Um, from Rattigan County, uh, kind of a little extension agent, um, servant of all, just a valuable member, not just of that council, but one that we work with on a lot of operations as well. Um, and then the last thing, uh, there's a, a map on one of those slides showing the green infrastructure mapping program that we did, um, this is identifying targeted areas, um, from a statewide model, um, targeted areas in the region that could be used for, um, conservation, just to consider as such, they're through closely comprehensive and long-term planning processes. Transportation, um, Mr. Nesbitt gave the presentation here, and we do work with VDOT, um, we have a rural transportation committee that meets bimonthly, um, Mr. Nesbitt's on that committee, we also have members from the Culpeper District, the planning office. Um, to be honest, that typical VDOT transportation is one that's a lower priority for us, not because of, we're not interested in it, just because of the way funding works. Um, we actually have a, a larger grant through the Department of Railroad and Public Transportation, um, for the foothills area mobility system. I believe this was included as an informational item, um, maybe last month's meeting or the month before, um, we have a one-call center, and this is aimed at connecting, um, citizens of the region that need transportation, requesting transit, volunteer transportation, if they need transportation to a medical equipment, um, this is a, a grant that allows us to fund, um, mobility program, and actually have mobility specialists that can assist those people, um, identifying transportation, and when unfortunately there isn't a transportation option, um, noting that and making note of that for gaps and allowance, and try to be creative about, um, trying to fulfill those needs. Um, what that has done this year is we've actually been able to put in for a pilot project, working with, um, the free clinics in Culpeper, Acapulco, and Rattigan, to, if they have, um, clients that come to the free clinic that have transportation issues, um, we've got some money this year where we can try to assist those people with getting to the free clinic, getting to medical appointments, um, and we'll be tracking outcomes to that to see if it's a valuable use of, um, the funding and through the state of that. Um, and hopefully we'll refer the project, which works, um, throughout the state. And then the last, uh, transportation item, just briefly, is we have a commuter services program, um, this is a ride-matching service, uh, for carpool and vanpool, mostly for commuters from our region going to Northern Virginia, um, but if there are commuters going within the region, if they need to go, if you've got a group that goes from, um, certain location in the region, whether it's Rattigan, or Orange, and that sort of transportation, we can connect them together, um, and they can form vanpools, carpools. Um, we do counts at the, the carpool lots, the, the rideshare lots, there's one at five-twenty-two and to eleven, and then one at Amistil, um, which are officially marked by VDOT, which we go out and monitor, to see the level of, um, how many people are commuting out, and often those two are, um, often those two have higher counts than I think most people would expect, if you're thinking about, well, there's a parking lot at the intersection to eleven and five-twenty-two. Um, regional tourism, and this kind of goes hand-in-hand again with, uh, Mr. Peterson's presentation about the farm tour. Um, tourism directors or tourism coordinators in each of the counties, um, come together, they meet not on a regular basis, but often about once a month, maybe once every two months, um, and a most recent project was last year, they developed, um, a regional agro-artisan trail, uh, website called the Queen Rivers Trail. Um, this is, was funded by a grant through the state, um, the agriculture and forestry investment, uh, I'm, excuse me, agriculture, agriculture and forestry industrial development grant, um, through VDOTs, and it allowed us to kind of put together, um, it's, it's a listing of, um, agro-artisan producers. So it's open to any, um, agriculture-related business, any forestry-related business, um, and that, that is a pretty flexible definition, um, certainly we're targeting, um, agricultural producers and forestry-related producers, um, with that, but it's a free listing on this regional website, so it covers all of our, uh, five counties, and as of, uh, last Friday, when I did the numbers, um, the total listings we have over sixty, um, businesses listed, and eleven of those are from Rattigan County, um, and it's wide-ranging from bed and breakfast, to restaurants, to tree, Christmas tree farms, things of that nature. Um, the regional tourism company is also hosting a series of workshops, um, starting last year, um, twenty-sixteen, um, we built, excuse me, one on, um, just Virginia Tourism Corporation grant programs, um, for, uh, small producers and, um, small tourism operators, and then we had a US DA roundtable, um, in August in Culpeper. Uh, the next workshop is going to be in January, um, January twenty-sixth, I believe, they decided on, and the subject's gonna be social media marketing, um, again, for, um, tourism operators, and really anyone that's interested would be open to anybody. Um, these are free workshops, and once the, um, location is decided on, then January twenty-sixth date. Housing and continuum of care, uh, this is an area where the regional commission has sort of always been involved, but more in affordable housing, um, kind of, we've looked at affordable housing several times through the years, um, about three, two and a half, three years ago, um, we were asked by, um, not just our board, but by Social Services offices, other, uh, partners, to step into a role, um, as the leader of the local planning group to continuum of care, and the reason that we were asked to do this was, uh, because funding from the state, which went towards homeless shelters in the region, was going to be removed unless you have a regional group coordinating, uh, these homeless shelters together, collecting data from each of these. Um, it is not, it was not at the time thought to be a long-term solution for the regional commission, to be the, the house for this, um, program. It's been two and a half years, we're trying to coordinate, um, the best way to facilitate this regional planning, and see what the possibility is beyond that, um, and, and where this might find a permanent home, um, with a different organization. Um, that said, we are committing, we have committed resources to it, um, we have forty-eight thousand dollars in local funds committed to this, and that has enabled us to keep or bring in an additional about five-hundred thousand dollars a year, um, that otherwise wouldn't be available to the region, and would have seen, uh, there were three homeless shelters at the time, one of them in Orange closed, the other two, one in Culpeper, one in Acapulco, your state open, um, without this group in place, those shelters would not receive, um, funding from the state, so, um, we've, we've kind of stayed on top of that and tried to, try to ride some, um, capacity building and, and leadership in that role. Um, you can see that, that, that has formed the foothills housing network, um, again, Social Services offices are represented, um, homeless shelters, People Incorporated, who is the community action provider, um, for Culpeper, Rattigan, and Acapulco counties is involved, um, and other stakeholders. As I said, this is something that you think long-term will probably end up at a different organization, as long as it's, um, the regional commission will take care of it. Um, and I would say the, the one thing that we've been able to do is sort of funnel any requests that come in, um, to the homeless shelters or to other partners for housing, um, we've been able to funnel that into another one-call center at our office, and have, um, started to collect the data for that over the last year, so we can better make the case for other grants besides the state. Um, those numbers, I think, from December of last year until November of this year, uh, about forty-five calls came in from Rattigan County, um, and we were able to put eight of those people into direct programs that come through the grants that we have, another twelve into funding that our partners have, um, and that the rest would be referred, uh, out to other partners as well. Um, so we try to, we try to keep those numbers up to date on a monthly basis, and we'll have to, to share those in the future if it's useful. Um, the other two core program areas that I had listed previously, hazard mitigation planning, this is something that we've, uh, presented with, uh, some of the work earlier, we may still be back there, with emergency management in the region, um, we're about ready to undergo a five-year update to that plan, um, and by having that plan in place, uh, certain monies from FEMA, um, become available, uh, for hazard mitigation planning, um, and for hazard mitigation, um, projects. Um, that process will begin, probably May or June of next year, for the update process. And then data collection and technical assistance, um, this is something that is more of a, you know, if you have a question, Doc, I need to know what the population is of the county, I need to have a question, maybe something much more in-depth than that, um, we are always available to answer those questions. Um, I'm happy to, to, um, look up data, if it's a larger scale thing, you know, comprehensive plan, data-based, things of that nature, we can talk, but if you just have a question, please give our office a call, we can probably find the pastor, maybe not with everybody, but maybe save you some time on looking for data. So, um, again, I, I thank you for the time, and I'd answer any questions about what we're doing right now, and what we could do in the future, and, um, certainly look forward to, to opportunities to partner not only with the board, but with the other great people in the place. Thank you.
Good question, Patrick. Five-twenty-two and two-eleven, you call that a commuter lot?
commuter lot might be a bit of an exaggeration, but it is something that VDOT, um, does reference as a spot for commuters to park, park in my lot, um, where they do say, yes, you can park there on the corner, um, maybe park and get into something else.
First, I've heard it referred to as a commuter lot.
Yeah, I, I probably, probably goes better, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not opposed to it, but it doesn't strike me as being like, you know, a safe commuter lot that you can get into and get out of.
Well, that is, and that's.
One of my clever's corner, which obviously is huge, but.
Oftentimes, and I certainly wouldn't make this case, and the two that are referenced, Amistil and right there, definitely two and two-eleven, but oftentimes, the way commuter lots start, it is a gravel off, just off the road, um, if you drive sixty-six and you stop at the lanes on weekday, um, exit thirty-one, I think, you can see at the fifteen cars, basically just park in the gravel area, um, right at the, the spot there, and that's just how they start, and then VDOT starts, someone knows, is, 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 can you park there? And VDOT usually says, sure.
I have a question about, uh, transportation. I don't have a smart phone, so I may not have been approaching how to find an Uber in this area the right way, but it seems like this would be an opportunity for some local people that would make a little money, but as far as I could tell, there wasn't any Ubers to be found.
You know, from our research, and this goes back to the, the foothills area mobility system, they've done some work on that. I know in Culpeper, around Culpeper, there was, um, you know, one or two drivers, um, they just announced last week, I believe, that the Uber competitor Lyft has opened, was opening Charlottesville and would stretch into, I think, Orange County. It is something we've looked at, and there's actually a model out, um, in the Midwest, a company called Liberty, um, that has talked about trying to develop Uber-type systems in rural areas, um, so certainly something we've looked at, I don't think we've found that, um, you know, certainly not something that we could say, yes, this is gonna be done, but I hate our models out there, and I, I don't disagree that it's a possibility for an entrepreneurial spirit to, to take that on.
We used to call that hitchhiker.
I, I have a question, Mr. Chan. Um, your last slide, you show highlighting Red, again, it's broadband and Go Virginia Economic Development, and there's some, we hear all kinds of rumors, but there's supposed to be some seed money in the Go Virginia Economic Development Program for broadband. Can you tell us if they're even talking to you, if you know where they lead, when?
Sure, yeah, um, first we'll talk about Go Virginia, that is a statewide initiative, um, where they're, they're going through the process right now at the state level of identifying what the regions will look like, um, they wanna have fewer, there's, just by way of background, there are twenty-one, um, regional commissions like ours throughout the state, they wanted fewer regions for Go Virginia, they would have had a bit, a bit larger. Um, it looks like at this point, the Go Virginia region that we will be in will include Plan District Nine and Plan District Ten, which is Charlottesville, um, follows the same, uh, boundaries as the workforce board for this region. Um, what they're looking for is the first year, uh, there will be money available to do some planning, work capacity building, get the regional councils built up, and identify projects. Um, I think there is a possibility for broadband funding there, um, what they really push at the state level, however, is you need to identify projects that are going to provide a large number of jobs, and a room for high-paying jobs. As a last mile funding source, I don't think Go Virginia's gonna be, um, that source, but as a, as an economic development tool, I think that's really what the state is driving at in that regard. Um, that said, and I appreciate you reminding me, since I, I'd like you to talk about, um, those bottom three bullets. Broadband is something that is being talked about every county in our region, um, I know there's a broadband committee update later today here in Rattigan, um, I served on the steering committee for the Culpeper County project, a plan they just finished off, um, two months ago, uh, Acapulco County has theirs ongoing, and I know Orange County has, has sort of bypassed that planning process that some of the counties are going through, because they have a plan in place. Um, I think one of the things that, that is actually gonna come up, like, with my next board meeting, with our board, is the discussion of what should, what should the regional commission's goal be beyond just talking about and offering assistance to counties that are looking at broadband? Um, certainly something that should be a larger, a regional discussion, um, we encourage during the Culpeper process that when they look at what they're doing, they shouldn't just say, well, you know, Culpeper sort of looks like they wanna do towers. Well, Culpeper's gonna do towers, then talk to the neighbors and say, well, we're gonna have a tower here. Well, Culpeper's gonna do towers, then talk to the neighbors and say, well, we're gonna have a tower here. You might not even put one right across the river or right across, you know, in the case of where the boundary is. So certainly that coordination at a minimum, and beyond that, there may be possibilities for larger participation at the regional level. Certainly for some cost savings if you're gonna do some build-out analysis, things of that nature. So I hope that we'll be involved whenever the board gives permission to be involved.
Broadband Committee's kickoff meeting is tomorrow at four o'clock at the library. So if there's anybody in the staff that's in the tent, more than welcome, as well as anybody here, members of the public.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Patrick.
Hey, I'm Jason Stole, business owner of First Time with the Woodbridge Harry Connors.
Yes, gentlemen, I was just handed by Mr. Brown a revised version of the contract that you're looking at. The contract that you have probably has a paragraph number nine.
It's the one on Friday.
That's the one on Friday. So the newest iteration omits paragraph number nine, which was the paragraph that required the county to provide two different types of insurance, liability insurance and also property insurance. And I understand that that, that paragraph has now been removed entirely.
My copy's still there.
And that's because I just got the new one from Mr. Brown.
Oh, I'm sorry.
After the meeting started. Also included is the revised plaque, which you don't have a copy of as well. And a revised plaque, now consistent with the language that's used in the body of the deed of gift of easement. So it makes sense, they changed the nomenclature, so that's the only substantive change to the plaque. The bottom line is that now neither myself nor Mr. Lynch have any legal objections to the format. The form as of this document is, it's now in my hand, differing from the one that's in yours in that respect, that I told you to delete the paragraph number nine, and Mr. Lynch was willing to sign it as the form. So if the board be so advised, this document is not objectionable from a legal standpoint.
I have a question. I drove by there today, and they have the secondary, a new entrance, and then also a cable or a chain across the parking lot separating the orchard parking area from the parking area near the, where the monument will be. And I don't know if that was an indication of their changing the plans of separating the parking, or will there be a separate entrance, or is that for construction purposes?
I noticed that too, and I don't know. It's shown on a plaque that was provided to me just an hour ago from Mr. Brown as an existing entrance. And I don't know to what extent that has received E-DOT approval or not. It certainly, it doesn't really affect the county's interest in the monument easement period, because there's nothing, the documents sound on what types of ingress, egress that there's going to be. It just says that there has to be ingress and egress. So I don't know if that's something that Mr. Jenkins is gonna have to get approval for, that second entrance.
Well, the second entrance looked great. I think it had their clearance, visual clearance, then coming down the old one, so.
Well, I saw that a couple of weeks ago after the witness hearing. And that is a plastic culvert, and it's not, it's only covered by a few inches of gravel and dirt. And that, that, that'd be effective with a galvanized culvert, but that isn't gonna happen. And it says here in paragraph seven, "Such easement in a condition such as reasonably passable by pedestrians and passenger vehicles." So we're gonna, the first thing we're gonna have to do is replace that, sign this, replace that.
Well, not the county, not the county.
A plastic culvert, okay, fine, gotcha. A plastic culvert will be sufficient if it's got enough cover.
It doesn't.
I don't know what's required.
That's their problem, it's fine.
Yeah, your point is that second entrance and that culvert and materials and all that, that's, that's not the county's. Has nothing to do with us. The grantor has the complete responsibility of maintaining the parking lot, the variable with parking lot, and making that passable for vehicles and pedestrians, not the county. All we're obligated to do under this agreement is to maintain the actual grounds as are shown as the monument easement area, the third of an anchor there. And we have to keep it free from trash and keep it mowed and in a quote "sightly" condition.
So E-DOT picks up the phone and calls about that, that's not a question?
I give them Mr. Brown's telephone number.
Thank you.
Well, I would say since they removed paragraph nine, I presume there'll be no objection to going ahead with this contract as proposed.
Can you make the edit of the motion?
Yeah, I'll make that as a motion that we approve this, that's presented to Mr. Dalton.
I'll second it. I think it's important that we recognize and honor the hardship those people went through when they lost their homes to the park. It, you know, it's potentially a devastating thing to happen to when one to lose their home and had to move to a different place and start life all over. So I think this is a good thing to honor those people, and there are people, the people of this county, so.
Then your motion includes vacant.
Yeah. Or is that state?
But not so nice.
No, it just says mowing and trash and slightly conditioned.
Mr. Chairman, it says kept free of clear junk of any kind, trash, rubbish, and unsightly or offensive materials. So, and it'd be kept in a slightly conditioned, which I would interpret to mean if there's grass, it'd be mowed.
Focus, that's Mr. Venkis is right there, he'll go in, we're forcing him.
Well, I also think it's a fitting tribute, Mr. Chairman, and a wonderful addition to the county. My own injections in the past is, I thought it might be better suited at the visitor's center, but it seems like all the issues, my, my managed point have been worked out with the county, so I'm a forward supporter.
Well, is there any more discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor to say aye.
Aye.
And I would resist if I didn't say aye, but my aunt would be very upset with me.
Fire Rescue Services Agreement. We have, Deputy Knight had meetings with all the chiefs, and I think we came up with a plan. I'm going to have an interliniated, highlighted version of the agreement ready for Mr. Fraser to provide to all of the fire chiefs with explanations as to proposed changes in the language, and then an explanation thereof, that everybody will have that copy and then be able to comment on that copy. So, so we're all working from the same page, and everybody gets input on that. My, my target goal, what I promised, was to have that revision done and into Mr. Fraser's hands by the first of the year. And I think we'll be able, with everybody's input, we'll have a really solid agreement, and that everybody agrees to a hundred percent. So that's the plan right now, that's the update. I know it's been a long time coming, but I think that we'll have it done. It's not that complex a task to get this agreement completely revised and approved by everyone. And then, of course, when the time comes when that agreement is proposed, then we can all talk about a timeline for getting it back with all the other comments and suggested provisions and limitations.
So it goes back to Mr. Fraser's committee after you did the rest.
Mr. Fraser.
So it'll be a few months after that before this board sees it that way.
I would think there's gonna have to be a little bit of, a little bit of, you know, cooking and curing time, and then we'll have it as an agreement to present to the board.
Questions, Mr. Chairman?
There was a second attachment to that form, which was the cost account.
The cost of the county.
Yeah, the officially titled was the chart of accounts.
Chart of accounts, yes.
All right, which was the basis for determining full funding. And it was submitted as a draft to the county to determine what that was. So having gotten, the committee hasn't gotten any feedback from the county as to what we wanted in that chart of accounts. And since some of the issues related about that, that should be expedited with any comments back to Mr. Fraser. So that that can be adjudicated at the same time.
That was, it was a topic of discussion, an idea that Ken Thompson had brought forward, and we just, we haven't worked on it, we haven't had any feedback, like Mr. Gray says, from this board or from anybody else for that.
It was to address the issue of what is actually considered full funding. Does it include cutting grass and so on and so on? And I think we need to be spending some time on that.
Well, I had set up, there was a revision on here for the budget scheduling, and I had talked to Mr. Atkins, the president of the Fire and Rescue, for them to make a presentation, a budget presentation. And during that budget presentation to talk about, if there isn't full funding this year, what is it that they're requesting? You know, last year it was a ten percent, what is that number? And if that doesn't happen and full funding does, then what should full funding be? So is that too late, or do we want to look at that earlier? I had it down for February the ninth, I believe.
Well, to explain, that chart of accounts should be what Jack uses to do the presentation. That's the way, that's the way Ken interpreted. So it would reflect, this is the way we want the budget presented. This is Ken's idea I'm bringing forward, all right? So, but that was the point of it, we haven't gotten feedback, so, and I don't know exactly how Jack is doing it, all right? So that's-
So will the association then bless the committee's chart of accounts and consider that to be the document we should, we should look at with respect to full funding? Or is your committee gonna get that over to the association?
I look at it totally different. That is the county's thing, it's not like the association or the committee gets the blessing. This is the way we want the financials. It's a county requirement, just like the, you shall perform to this level, which is the E-Mus requirement. You shall provide a budget in this format to our system.
So where's Mr. Atkins gonna be presenting to us on February ninth?
Well, that's what I'm not sure of. I don't know, because that was the concept, but I don't know where that, because I kind of fell through the cracks. I don't know where that is, if asking for Jack, or what Jack's been working on, you know? Without, without that guidance, he's putting it together the best he can, which is all you can ask, all right? That would just bring up that point, that that's a little piece that was part of this that seems to be floating around.
Right, well, full funding's a big part of the agreement.
Right, but understanding what they're asking for is a big, you know, because that chart of accounts gets into to equipment replacement and everything else, so it's the full enchilada of everything that they're doing.
The type of thing that they look at by finance committee.
I didn't make that point, okay?
So are we gonna be getting two different?
I don't know, I don't know what you're gonna do. I don't, I don't know. I haven't worked with Jack, it's not my job, I work with Jack. I offered to help him go look at it, you know, I don't know.
I'll take a look at it, yeah. I'll take a look at it and get something else I want to look at.
Okay, next time, is there broadband for any updates?
Mr. Chairman, as I mentioned earlier, the first meeting of the broadband committee is formed four o'clock in the library. We have six citizens who were selected at the last board supervisors meeting. We also have a couple of interested citizens who are interested in acting as a resource. We've already started doing some preliminary work. Circulated preliminary mission and goal statement, which I think you have here on board docs, which we'll be kind of refining tomorrow. There's been some articles that have been sent around, pushed forward, very good article in, I think it's Fock Year now, on Fock Year County's broadband committee efforts, which are very interesting to read, considering that committee is recommending a twenty million dollar price tag for multiple towers in Fock Year County. And they're supposed to have their final report to the board, their board supervisors in January.
But Millburn hasn't spoken.
And we're, we'd be remiss if we didn't follow that. As well as, obviously tomorrow night, I think Culpeper's board supervisor is gonna be meeting to book on the tower in Boston, which, again, at our corporate rate, you know, could benefit us. So there are things that are happening all around us, we've circulated some materials and articles for the committee to school up on, including some of the articles that were in the Rappahannock News earlier. An article Mr. Fraser sent to us, it's been circulated to the committee. An article Mrs. Price sent to us, it's been circulated to the committee. So this will be, I see a couple of members of the committee out here in the audience today. We haven't set a timeline yet, that's part of what we'll talk about tomorrow, is to, when we'll have some kind of a document back to the board supervisors, but hopefully we'll be able to report on that in January, as well as timeline is gonna be, what the deliverable will look like. And we're also looking at the two thousand seven broadband committee here in Rappahannock that was formed. We're looking at their final product as well.
All right. Any other comments? Next time, agenda policy. Who's got it?
We have an agenda policy draft. Everything in black is what's in the ordinance, red is what's been added. I haven't received any changes from you, so it stands as it was at the last meeting. I assume that you're probably not ready to approve it, but up for discussion.
Well, I have a question, agenda policy. Let's see, it's in the red letter, I guess it's on page four or five, it's agenda item. A new agenda item should be updated by written narrative. Is that for the board members themselves too, if I'm right? Is that for the members of the public?
Members of the public. And I put that in because if someone's coming in and they're asking for funding or something specific, you should have- specific, you should have it in advance so that you know specifically what they're asking for.
Right, but I was just concerned that some of the things that different members of this board have already gone forward in the past six months, we've been a lot of it. We didn't have it when we started talking about it, so.
I had a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Okay, then. Mr. Kaiser, I apologize. I should have gotten these to you in advance and I can certainly do it by email. But, um, on, on page two there, just right above meetings, article two, that last paragraph in red where it says, "At all times, the board supervisors reserves the right to deny a topic." Are you talking about, would that mean a majority vote of the board supervisors? Or it doesn't say how that would happen? Or just one member has to?
Definitely usually the board chairman would be the one that would manage that. So if someone were to bring something in, um, that they are putting it together and want to put it on, it would be something that the chairman would decide to deny, postpone, whatever would be appropriate.
And I notice two paragraphs above that where it says, "Individuals wishing to address the board outside of the comment form have to receive approval from either the chairman or through the consensus of three or more supervisors."
Right, which is what we did today, which is when Mr. Blaney had a question to ask.
But should that also be the language you use when we say the board reserves the right to deny a topic? Is that the same, should that be the same criteria? I, I, these are just questions. These are just a question I have. Um, and then the top of the next page where it refers to, uh, that first paragraph there, it's in the talics, "Shall proceed as in subsection A." I didn't see a subsection A, but is that in the, is that in there in the figure document or?
That's my understanding. I'll, I'll double check it, but I believe it is.
Okay. And then the next page, under motions, I was wondering if there should be somewhere in here where there's a reference to Roberts' Rules of Order as far as Parliament, I mean, talks about bringing a motion forward and seconding any parliamentary, I don't know.
It's my understanding from Mr. Luke that the board neverly, never formally adopted Roberts' Rules, that you adopted a more informal version, so, um, certainly subject to change at this point.
Well, if we had Dr. Roberts, who is in the chair of the day position, not being in the motion seven, but, um, that, that would, that along with, with disenfranchised one who's district hasn't counted.
Okay. Being the new guy, I understood.
I, I agree with that, too.
Okay. So we don't want to do that. And then under agenda items in red, just below that, the second paragraph, "If an ordinance is proposed as an agenda item for board consideration," uh, is that as determined by the board supervisor or is it determined by the chairman?
Um, that would be if a citizen wanted to write a resolution similar to what would normally be done by Mr. Goff, they should use the same format that the county uses in general, instead of presenting something that's based on their style, so.
Okay, it's more of a style question then.
It is.
Okay. Now whether he's gonna get on there or not. Um, I'm almost done here. What's the next page? "Appointments shall be 10 minutes or less. Discussions of personnel issues with private, or I guess it's about five paragraphs down."
Mm-hmm.
Um, what, what is that referenced to, appointments?
Appointments being when people come in and want to add something to the agenda. Like for Molly today, I tell most people it needs to be 10 minutes or less.
Oh, I see.
There could be, so we could put in general.
You're talking about presentations to the board?
Yep.
Okay, I apologize. I didn't know what you meant by appointments.
I'll clarify.
And then my last thing is the next paragraph right after that. It says, "Favorit to submit all paperwork." Um, my question is on, on the thing about handouts. Handouts at the meeting are unacceptable if they have not been included on board docs a week in advance.
Where they have enough to pass out to everybody that's here, so that you don't have someone coming in and they're talking about something and nobody has any idea of what it is. So normally the public goes out and reads board stuff, board docs, just like you do. So you don't want somebody coming in and presenting something totally different than what you're familiar with. So if they don't have it in time, then they should bring handouts for the public.
Okay, but if, if, I just don't want it to be abused that, oh, wait a minute, you know, you decided to add a slide here a week and therefore your whole presentation's getting tossed out. I mean, it's not a, all right. Just wanna make sure that didn't happen. But I apologize. I'll, I'll email those to you as I should have before the meeting.
I have some simpler, uh, suggestions. Uh, page three, uh, conducting a public hearing, uh, we, it's mentioned to state your full name before proceeding. And our, uh, procedure in the past has always been, uh, name and also district. Then a couple of paragraphs below that talking about, uh, placement of cameras and the use of recording. Uh, I personally, I would prefer that no flash, flashes be used or auxiliary lights for, uh, uh, video or cameras. I find that those would be rather, this is distracting from, uh...
All right. Anything else?
No.
Any other comments? All right, I will take it back and make the additions and we'll put it there before next month.
For Mr. Lord and commissions proposed policy, uh, Ms. Kaiser?
There is a policy that is out there for your consideration. I'll hold it up a minute, let me get this out to you. So what I did, it's a fairly complicated policy. And so what I did was to put together a list of questions that you answer, then I can draft the policy from it. Uh, we've not been consistent in our appointment policies. And if you're interested in doing so, these are the items up for your discussion. The first one is individuals wanting to be reappointed should submit a letter in advance by a deadline. So is that something that you agree with or you don't agree with? And again, I'll take your answers and go back and form the policy if anything makes sense.
I would say yes.
Yeah, I agree.
I would suggest a simple email type letter would be sufficient. But yes, having a, something that's, uh, called concrete that they said they wanted to proceed would be a good idea.
Okay, the individual, I assume there's consensus on that? Is that right, John?
Yeah.
Yep. Uh, the individual should complete an application also. That would need to be developed. We don't have one. But it would just have that person sign a document that says that they're a county resident, they're over the age of 18. That way, if their resume or their letter comes in, we just make sure that we're meeting, um, any legal requirements. And I'll need to meet with, uh, Mr. Goff and make sure that Virginia doesn't have any specific statutory requirements.
For an application?
Uh-huh, to put on the, for the application for them to complete.
Yeah, the only one that we ran afoul of is the place to mine office where we, we've got somebody on a board of commissioners also on BCA, and that's clearly in that statute, something's on that table.
So is it?
We could put that, we could put that on the application as to whether or not they're serving on any other boards.
Right.
Well, we should have that on the list, but somehow we missed it over the years.
So is there agreement to a simple application? Regardless of whether it's a reappointment or a new candidate, an ad notice should be ran for each of one member.
Yeah. I think if there's, sometimes there's multiple vacancies on a board, maybe the library board or something like that, we could save some money by instead of running the individual ads, just consolidating.
But this is saying too, that if you have somebody that's been on there for 20 years and they're up for reappointment, you're still going to put an ad up there for other people to respond to.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I would agree with that.
And the ad for the open position should be on our distribution list and our website. I assume there's no issue with that. That's free. Um, the ad should be included in the newspaper, which will be an increase in cost, but it does, um, put it out for the public and make them aware. It's going to be about $60 a ad that was not had previously.
And the paper will reduce that cost if it weren't for free.
It's my consolidation, you know?
Yeah.
It's my consolidation comment. I think you have to put the paper, that's personal.
Are you all in agreement then? Uh, all current members are asked to serve until an appointment has been made. I assume that's a yes, that's been the past practice. If it's...
They may not do it.
Hmm?
Actually, they may not do it.
Right. If it's a district-specific assignment, the supervisor of that district should make the recommendation. Otherwise, when not district-specific, the nominations are open to all board members.
Yes, yes.
And do you want to interview the candidates or just select on the resume and/or application? Do you want to see everybody or just people you don't know? So no on that one, John?
I agree with Chris. There are none.
Thank you very much. I'll just cut that and put the proposal together, please.
There are, it's like there's a lot of, of what you're about to get into there. It's like there's opens coming up in the...
Mr. Frazier, hope you brought your glasses. You did. This is very small. This is a list of the assignments. And as you know, in January, uh, we have a number of, um, appointments that we need to make. The ones in red are the ones that need to be addressed. The ones in blue are the January agenda. So the first one is we have, uh, Mr. Henry that will be up in de, uh, February. So we'll be running that ad, uh, in December or January, based on what we talked about today. Mr. Brady is up on the planning commission in May, so we will advertise in March an appointment, April.
We're gonna advertise the position in case they want to be reappointed?
Yes. That's what we...
At least I wasn't paying attention to that. We hadn't done that before.
I think the first thing to do is...
He said that he didn't think that we should run an ad for reappointing someone.
We'd always, I mean, you know, if somebody was willing to serve and they've been doing a good job, we'd normally just reappoint them. It was always the supervisor that district who put their name forward.
I still think that's happening. I still think you said here that if it's district-specific, that supervisor in that district is gonna make the recommendation. Still, supervisor still has that.
If it's district-specific.
Well, are we creating a situation where we're advertising for a job and somebody already wants to do it? And then he's thinking, well, maybe he's gonna be replacing.
Yeah, I mean, it might, it might, might look bad.
Well, the first question that goes out is whether that individual wants to continue to serve. I think that's the first question.
Right, and we, and we will get that response back.
But I, I just, you know, have a concern about people who are in there for, for life, basically. I think board members, freshers, they're going to be four years.
With the amount of training, that's gotta go until we disapprove that. Back in June or July, we were gonna start requesting training, so if we put them through the training and then we don't reappoint, then we gotta retrain them.
So the person certainly with the experience, I would think would have the, uh... We would have, I don't wanna say the edge, but certainly have the qualifications to continue to serve.
I mean, maybe we'd have other ideas, but I think the way that we're going about it's gonna cause some hard feelings. I'm not saying I disagree with you in some respect, but I'm just saying that if, if we start running a particular ad and we haven't talked to the city member, then that's, that's gonna look bad.
Well, we would talk to the city member and they would say yes or no, whether they wanna be reappointed or not. It's just that we...
But you're talking about running an ad in December for the very next one. And we would...
Well, there may not be anybody interested in the position. I mean, Mrs. Bluebaugh, you know, she may, she wants to continue to serve, uh, on that commission. And there's nobody else that's interested. But we, I think we gotta give people of this community a chance to, I mean, we're always complaining about, you know, no one wants to serve on these boards. And I think if we send the message that you're on there for life or until you decide you wanna get off, then I think that's really gonna, I think that's going to, um, disinterest a lot of folks.
Well, many of them have term limits and are at the pledge of the board, so.
I mean, your library board and social, I mean, uh, we, uh...
I don't know how many of them don't have term, um, limits.
They're stated on there under the comments column as to whether they have term limits or not. And the blue are the ones that we'll address in January. We have one appointment, um, under farmland protection, that we need a board of supervisor appointment. It was privately, and it was never, um, never addressed, so I'll put that on for January unless you wanna do that today.
Farmland protection, this board abolished the, uh, the...
So we abolished that.
Oh.
So we need to turn it in. And then Peter Luke is on the Shenandoah National Park Blue Ridge Committee. That will need to be addressed as well since he's leaving. And the building appeals board, Peter Carlin has been gone and we probably need an engineer, so that's one that we need to look at. Right, any questions? We'll add it back on for January.
He can find something smaller for you.
I'll see what I can do.
Just have, have a place to hide your glasses up there.
And next time, does it sound like another?
The other thing that I did was to add in on February the ninth, I mentioned this earlier, the 2/20, the 3/20 meeting, which will be the Fire and Rescue Association, the budget for 2017, 18, and discussion of full funding. And that'll be a presentation by Jack Atkins, the Fire and Rescue.
Mr. Chairman, if I could have a few minutes?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, it's the last month, as Mr. Blaney pointed out, I believe the board made an improper motion and a second and a vote to abolish the, uh, the finance committee.
the finance committee. That's kind of a moot point for two people to serve on it. But I, I think technically we still have the finance committee, but this board talked about working together and doing long range budget planning and, you know, finance planning. And there's nothing in this list here. This is just for the budget through June fifth that we have to adopt for next year. So I just thought I'd point that out, that I said this board couldn't do it, this board has taken no planes to do it. And there you have it.
I thought I meant that the past year of having everyone come in to.
That, that, that's the budget. The finance committee should have been, and we were not doing anything because we couldn't seem to get together, and that's why I want to discuss enlarging it. There was nothing on the agenda about abolishing that. So it was actually, it was an improper motion, an improper second, and an improper vote. But again, if we don't have anybody that wants to serve on it to do any long range planning for the county, it's kind of a moot point. I'm beating a dead horse. I'm just pointing out that we were discussing doing long range financial planning for the county's fiscal health. And this chart here has us moving twice in, uh, three times in February, twice in March, twice in April, once in May and June. And there's nothing absolutely at all on here about discussing long range planning. And, and I told the board then, and, and, and I reiterate that, that this board is not going to do long range planning because we haven't done it. We don't even know how to start it. But while I'm there, the newspaper carried part of it in the article, part of our discussion, we don't have minutes to reflect on. And Mr. Lasensky was quoted as saying that the county administrator and the treasurer would work on it. We can task the county administrator with it if she wants to, if she's willing to do it. But the treasurer has no statutory obligation to work with us in that respect. She's a constitutional officer, she has her own statutory obligation. She does not have to serve as our finance, guidance type person, whatever you want to call that. Whether you make her the finance director or whatever, she has no obligation to do that.
She doesn't, and I'm aware of that, and Debbie's aware of that, but we have talked about doing this together. We have a good relationship and I have planned on doing it. I will present something, but I don't know the deadline for doing it. I hope to have it in January or February for you to review. It'll be a start, probably won't be as sophisticated as where I hope it will be. But I do think that we need to look at it. We've got the new financial system that we're all learning. We don't have a lot of history on it, so it's hard to get the data. We'll have to do some projections without some of the back data, but we do hope to do that. So I'll be working with Debbie. And again, she's aware that she doesn't have to do that. I don't know how much time she'll spend. But she's certainly very capable and able and is willing to help anytime she can.
I can only help.
Well, we've heard, I guess, part of the problem. What about the solution?
Part of the solution is what? Are you talking about what I just said something? Yeah. Part of the solution was what I tried to talk about last month and it was shut down by a four to one vote. We should expand the finance committees. We've got a committee talking about broadband, but we've got no money for it. But, and, in fact, right now the county's worse than what we're borrowing from. That fund that we established, this board established a month ago for the litigation and legal services and all that, that's borrowed money. Either you have to take it from some other company. So here we are, and, and another thing, we, we approved some of the funding before we actually had the appropriation. So we're doing, we're, we're actually doing things backwards as far as spending money. We had approved, we had approved the, the county attorney, as I guess we did, that would go into some sort of litigation for the board, but there was no money there. So then while they're, they're racking up hours, we had to cover that by, by saying that we were going to do a separate additional appropriation to our budget. We've been, in some line items, not all, but in some line items, this board has been deficit spending since October first. And that was, that was part of the, the county attorney. So he turned in bills to be paid for hourly billings and we had no money in the budget for it. So there, I'm saying, we, this board approved work that we had no appropriation to cover. That's not the exact way that you wanna do business. And the very same meeting, or actually one month after this board approved that type of spending process, it voted to abolish the finance committee that never really had a chance to work because nobody seems to wanna work on it. So if you don't wanna work on it, that's fine, but I don't know how you're gonna get from A to B and from B to C if you don't do some kind of long range planning.
In terms of that, we'll add one of these dates, a discussion on the long range plan. Figure out what the aim is. And initiate that process. And so, uh, pick a date in, uh, February, March.
Why don't we start, why don't we start in January?
Add it on to, uh, that's fine.
I think we need to, at least we can initiate something in January to see when this board needs to start hitting. Because we've got a long road to go. You're talking about broadband. Talking about fully funding the fire and rescue. We're, we're making no financial plan in case we have to go career for fire in the U M S. As a matter of fact, we don't even have any money for dividends for raises that the state.
Well. Yeah, have a frank discussion on what long-term finance.
Well, we gotta start somewhere. I mean, if we have a finance committee, we couldn't, couldn't give the two members. That's not solvable. Then we'll have to go to the suburbs.
Well, it was a requirement to have, I mean, to have two members on it, but we couldn't seem to get together. And then last month, they all said that you didn't want them. So what would be a good.
Let's go ahead and get this back in January, get this started.
Mid-January?
Argue?
Mid-January?
I prefer the road, the four-legged.
Four-legged.
We have a meeting on the fourth.
That's the second Monday.
Well, we did talk back in the fall about having a work session, uh, if we needed one. Uh, that kind of fell off the table. It just sounds different than that, but.
Yeah, that was the last year.
We always did reserve a second, we talked about reserving a second Monday. Or third Monday, third Monday, I apologize.
Well, the ninth is just in the middle of the month, which. Second Monday is the ninth, the third Monday is sixteenth. Third Monday is in the middle of the month.
Mr. Chairman, can you provide it?
So John is sixteenth. Would you rather have him?
I'm not beating a candle in the morning.
Sixteenth is an okay day, yes.
Thank you.
Can we go, can we go past one more?
Sixteenth is a holiday?
Martin is a King Day.
Lee Jackson. Good day.
That's Friday. That's a four-day weekend. I guess the ninth, if you can get it on sixteen, unless you wanna move to the second, Tuesday.
If I wanna do it on the third, I'd be, I'd be with the day before, next week.
That's, was everybody back that day? I mean, that's, that's the first day back after the long break.
Well, we, uh. Mr. Fraser, if you wouldn't mind, if, uh, you seem to have a specific idea of what you mean by long-term planning.
I'm talking about past the, the end of one budget cycle.
So what would that entail?
Well, I just said, we, we've got all these issues coming up and we've got no way to, to address them.
Well, typically when we need money, we raise taxes or borrow money. I mean, one of the two. Is there another avenue that you're thinking about?
Well, I think. I'm, I'm trying to keep the train record happening, that's what I'm.
I know, but is there another avenue that would, other than those two?
Well, what you're talking about is, is just wait and see what happens, and I don't think that we can afford that, not with that type of money we're talking about.
Well, there's one big problem that you can't predict the future. That, so you don't know what's gonna happen. So, you know.
No, but we know these things are gonna be happening. We just, we, but we're not preparing for them at all, period.
Yeah, I mean, that's why we had discussed the, the bond thing for the.
That's just for the radio.
That is, that is.
Well, let's go ahead and you add to what I, Mr. Letty?
Yeah, I just wanted to add in, it kind of addresses the point you're just now asking, all right? Is that in your planning, you do allow time to get data you do not have. So the issue is just not what bills you project in the future, the issue is what revenue that you're gonna project in the future. For example, I think if you look closely at your revenue report that Debbie just put out, you're, hopefully, two million dollars came in today. All right? Hopefully, two million, so there, there's questions about how accurate the revenue number is, and then to get those, to answer your questions like, what can you do, all right? Then you have to say, do what-if drills on how you do the taxes. Do you change other things like land use or something else like that, or, you know, and there's a number of different ways to change that. So that's the other side. It, it's not only the bills, it's also the revenue. And on the revenue side, you have this big sucking sound called lack of data. 'Cause I've asked to get that data, I was gonna do it myself, but, but I was told it costs three hundred and fifty dollars to get the, the file from the vendor to do it. So just to let you know that when you get into this, you're gonna get into having data problems that go way past what you were talking about, planning commission during the comprehensive plan about the maps being a piece of you-know-what. All right, as I discovered the last couple of days working on a particular issue myself. So that was just like, just, it isn't just predicting what the bills are. You need a much more accurate prediction of what your revenue is gonna be. Another example is, so you can't expect the, the growth to come up because you're running out of twenty-five acre lots. How many more are gonna come in? You see what I'm saying? Things like that, those type of predictions, so you can project out what your rev, because your revenue's gonna cap. All right? Yeah. But then all you're left with is the tax rate, and it's gonna be real high because these other counties. So your logic is we stay right behind them, and you can't stay behind them because you're cer, they're already paying for services you aren't paying for, like gate firefighters, as an example. Sorry, a little longer.
That's all right.
I, I, I think any discussion along these lines has to include the treasurer.
Absolutely.
I think he's.
Treasurer.
And the commissioner of revenue.
Yes. That, why, that's, and I don't, you know, I think the question begins with those offices as to whether or not they're in a position to be able to even have the information. You can do accurate forecasting on for three or five years. I've asked, you know, I know you've asked a question, I've asked a question, and the answer here before has been, I'm just trying to figure it out on a year-to-year basis because of what I've been trying to dig out of. But I do expect sometime, hopefully, you know, in the near future, to be able to be in a position where I really understand, to your point, what the revenue truly is, and be able to forecast off of that.
The point I was making, when I did my comments about the one-year versus multi-year planning, all right? Is that in a one-year planning cycle, you are automatically inheriting the errors of the past. It's the long-range planning that lets you get rid of the errors that were in the past. That's just another, a lens way of looking at the differences in that, those two different types of budget. So you got built, my point is you got built-in problems within this and you get to the next year, as you know.
Right. I know, it's very difficult, and you're right, we do need data, we don't have the data put together, and that takes time.
And you need someone that can crunch those numbers because you all are busy.
So did you.
What do you have to say? I just wondered, you know, how you do the long-range planning, because we'll say, seems to me that you have to get your, at the mercy of the, of the state assembly as to what mandates they pass down to you that you're gonna have to spend money.
Every county does the same mandate.
I understand, and that's, I don't know, you know, I'm just saying, that's true, but, but I don't see how you can decide what you're gonna spend two years from now, when for all you know, the state may say, well, we're not gonna put any money into that, which I, and it's all up to the counties to do. And that kind of stuff. I, 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 I'm not saying that the long-range planning is bad. But I'm trying to understand how you can do it with, with this state that we live in where, where mandates become a, from, from friction.
Those are variables you don't have any control over, so you can't really.
Well, that's my point.
foresee this, but, but you've got some that you do have control over, and you've got to try and, and work with those.
Well, your, your example would be the social services presentation we heard last month. And so now the contractor that manages the facility is gonna get determined where those kids go. You think you just lost control of your social services budget? The answer is yes.
So, and that was the biggest piece, potentially the biggest piece of that.
Absolutely, sir. Absolutely.
We didn't spend it yet, but we said we think we may have to spend it. That was a couple of dollars more than any other category.
To answer, to answer Hank's question, you, you make a guess as to what's gonna happen, and, and you, you have some sort of plan. That's the one we, sorry, I didn't mean to.
Okay, well, let's try and get a date so that somebody can get through the meeting without having to charge overtime.
I, I guess, what, I, I like the ninth, it's okay, because the sixteenth is the end of a four-day weekend. I mean, the, you would either have it on Tuesday.
The ninth is better than the sixteenth.
I think so. And then maybe we can have, ask the treasurer and the commissioner of revenue if they can be here, because we need to make those type of presentations to them that we would like to talk to them about that type of data generation. If it's not possible.
At least, at least we can talk about what we're gonna talk about.
Yeah, but I think that, that's, that starts to, to kick it off there. We need to know what it's gonna take to generate that data. If they can't do it with what they have, we need to know why, we need to know what they need.
And how to do it.
Right, because we need to get there somehow, up here.
Maybe we foresee the finance committee coming back.
You didn't actually go away with it. You just refused to work with it.
Okay, listen, you said the ninth.
Do you need the, the party?
I would assume that would be a date.
Date.
Nine o'clock, ten o'clock?
Certainly.
Ten?
It's around here, Dave.
We made a log room.
To meet someone else.
Yeah, we made a log room.
Well, it's.
Ten o'clock, ten o'clock.
All right, good stuff. Resolution to support Mr. Luke and, uh, on the student deputy county attorney. Mike, do you hear that?
Well, by borrow of John's computer. Uh, a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of Rockland County, Virginia, where as of September November two thousand sixteen, the board voted to employ Peter H. Luke, S Y R, the current county attorney, to serve as deputy county attorney effective first of January two thousand seventeen, when Arthur L. Dahl converts from being deputy county attorney to being county attorney. This employment of Miss, of Peter Luke was made subject to the approval of the Board of, Board at the December fifth, two thousand sixteen meeting of the appropriate resolution described in. of the appropriate resolution described in, describing his term of employment, and this resolution is for that purpose. It is hereby adopted and resolved, effective on January first, two thousand seventeen. Peter H. Luke is appointed and employed to fulfill the position hereby, herefore created of Deputy County Attorney. He shall be an at-will employee, however, unless otherwise extended, his term of office shall expire on the thirtieth of Jan, two thousand seventeen. He may, he may maintain an office within the building occupied by the county attorney, but he is not required to be in that office except on as-need basis. Number two, during this, during the period, he is, serves as Deputy County Attorney. Peter H. Luke will be paid at the rate of two hundred dollars per hour for legal services rendered to the county, and he shall submit monthly invoices advising this, his time expended. Time spent on litigation shall be shown as such. He shall advise the county administrator and obtain her approval, if the time expends by him, and any week exceeds five hours, except in the case of emergencies as provided in paragraph four. Paragraph three, the position of Deputy County Attorney, as referred to in this resolution, is deemed to be a permanent part-time position, and will so serving, Peter H. Luke shall not be deemed to be an independent contractor. While so serving, Peter H. Luke will enti, will be entitled to continue his current county health insurance at county expense, however, the county will make no contributions to VRS on his behalf, nor shall he accumulate any kind of leave. He shall also be covered by any other county insurance, have the full to his, to officials, officers or employees of the county while performing the duties. As Deputy County Attorney, he shall report directly to the county attorney, and his main task shall be to consult with the county attorney on legal matters. However, if the county attorney is not available, Peter H. Luke may, upon request, provide legal service to other county officers, officials, departments, or employees, if they deem the situation to require immediate action. In such cases, he shall attempt to obtain the prior approval of the county administrator, if this time expense will exceed five hours per week. But if, if she is not available, he may proceed as he believes necessary to protect the county's interest. Arthur L. Goff has informed his board that as county attorney effective January first, two thousand seventeen, he agrees to accept and ratify the employment terms for Peter H. Luke to set forth here, and while serving as Deputy County Attorney, Peter H. Luke may continue to serve as assistant county attorney, however, he agrees to not engage in private practice of law. At the request of, and as an attorney for the treasurer, Peter H. Luke may continue to initiate real estate sales for which the county may advan, advance costs, such as collecting, collection efforts, shall be conducted on a low-cost and accounting basis, whereby all costs, advanced legal fees and expenses of sales are paid from the proceeds of sales of the taxpayers' redemption. Upon passage of this, we agree to the terms of this resolution.
In the form of a motion?
In the form of a motion, yes.
I'll second that. Motion made in second, this is a vote called out also?
It is.
Mr. Frazier?
I voted against it last month, I thought it said day.
Mr. Smith, Mr. Zinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Okay, congratulations, Mark.
Thank you, sir.
Potential improvement in land.
Chairman, I have a resolution. As I understand, this, this deal is pretty much dead. So, I've prepared a resolution for the board to consider, obviously, a resolution in second.
Okay, resolution by the Board Supervisors of Rappahannock County, Virginia. Resolve, the Board Supervisor of Rappahannock County, Virginia finds a proposed contract for improvements to the Rappahannock County landfill to accommodate heavy equipment storage and the payment of rent, therefore, is not in the best interests of the public welfare, and therefore, the said contract is rejected. And the matter will no longer be subject to discussion in open or closed meeting of this board. So...
Uh, formal motion.
That's a motion, yeah.
I have a second to add.
And we don't need a vote called, just, yeah, we do.
Yes, sir.
Motion made in second, Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Zinsky?
I have accused myself of all discussions in closed session, I understand, so I have stated.
Mr. Frazier? No, I don't.
Debbie, can I have that, so we can record that?
Okay, the next time, Mr. Amosville and Flatwood Revenue Supervisors, I'm concerned, proposed new hours.
Chairman, what's the email, the conversations I've had along these lines, has it been, Flatwood, been positive for changing of the hours?
I perceive very little, although the few that I have heard of have been positive, that it's going to be open a month.
So, we need a motion to...
To accept these.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the new hours on the, uh, landfill. But, both the landfills, in other words, as soon as they're closed on Sunday.
Yeah, there's really been changed, Amosville, it's really just, uh, changed a lot.
They're closed on Sunday, right, and then Tuesday, third, is Flatwood's closed.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Very good, I didn't sit and see it, still a call. Except me, I'm leaving. Do you have appointments? Oh, there was a, one we voted in for later? Do we add something to it, yes? Right at the end, right at the end of all the...
Yes, we did. All right, do you wanna give the update on the litigation?
Litigation, yes, uh, okay. Uh, here in Hill, uh, twenty-eighth November, the, uh, judge granted the petitioner's motion to amend, uh, the, uh, petition, but said this was the last amendment, or this now is, the case is in its third iteration, so at least at this point, we know what we're defending against, it's not a fluid target anymore. The court sustained, uh, our motion, uh, to extend the, the pagination length on a brief, which is a minor thing. Uh, also, uh, denied without prejudice, uh, a motion by the petitioner to disqualify Mr. Luke, uh, as representing the board. Uh, that'll be all taken up, along with our new motions that we're gonna file by December nineteenth. The court's gonna hear all of our motions, and our motion's on, on eighteen January, at ten a.m. in the morning, including, uh, significant to you all, our motion for, uh, sanctions, uh, against, uh, the petitioner and her counsel. Uh, that did survive, uh, and that will be, uh, litigated that day, along with additional motions that we plan to file. As I said, a couple of our motions survived, a couple of our motions for summary judgment, and our motion to dismiss. Uh, the petitioner dropped two claims, uh, declaratory judgment, and also the Public Re�urement Act, uh, so we don't have to spend a lot more time litigating that, uh, kinda, uh, claim. So, you know, uh, there's where we are, we're gonna have to spend a little bit more time on it. What has it cost so far? The litigation fund, uh, to date, seventeen thousand, one hundred seventy-five dollars and forty-five cents, uh, has been dedicated to bragging the Board of Supervisors. There's the remainder of eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four fifty-five, uh, set. That's where it's been spent so far, it's gonna have to be some, some more time, uh, in responding, uh, yet again, because of the new allegations brought up in the third petition, that didn't exist in the first tip. As to some rumors going around about my salary, uh, I just wanna make clear that, uh, that, you know, as a constitutional officer, Richmond pays the bulk of my salary, uh, Richmond actually reimburses the county for, uh, my salary to the two hundred twenty-one thousand dollars. There is a county supplement that you voted for all constitutional officers a number of years ago, wherein we all got approximately ten thousand dollar county supplement. Uh, what happens to that is, when I get a raise from the state, uh, then that is absorbed by the county. I don't get that raise passed through to me, the county keeps that money. I'll point out, too, that, uh, what I've asked for is salary, and I'm, I'm not doing myself any favors here, was forty-five thousand dollars a year for your part-time county attorney. That's, uh, I think, twenty thousand dollars less than you've been paying Peter. I didn't ask for a hundred fifty dollars an hour for litigation going forward after the first of January. I'd also point out, you don't have to pay two people's health insurance, you just, you're just paying mine, uh, and what you're doing already as, as constitutional officer. By VRS contribution, uh, you pay, um, that, plus I make a personal contribution, it's going up a little bit, but only to the tune of forty-five thousand dollars, uh, in addition to what's already being paid by both the county and by me. So, I think, I don't know where you're gonna find a county attorney for forty-five thousand dollars, but, except for sitting right here. So, I'm glad to do it, but, uh...
Yeah, we think...
We'll take it year by year.
If, if I could, I, I actually do have a couple of comments there, of, we really are paying for two people's health insurance because this board extended Mr. Luke's due June thirty, so we really are paying...
Until when, right?
Yeah, and, uh, and that eighty-four thousand dollars, unless this board supplements the line item of county attorney with some more money, that, there's not eighty-four thousand dollars there.
Well, I don't think I've been paid out litigation fund, I've been paid out county attorney bunches.
But, but as I pointed out last month...
Oh, I have, there's some, I have some, some...
Yeah, that, that's only gonna be six thousand dollars as of January one, so you would have to be paid out of something.
Well, as we, as we said, we, we estimated, I believe, an eighty-thousand dollar, uh, supplemental appropriation after the first of the year, to increase the budget enough, because Peter's leaving, see, he's leaving half of his funds unspent. So, we estimated with the, with the, the first of the year, we're gonna have to have supplemental of eighteen thousand dollars from, uh, to that, to the county attorney.
Because, those numbers don't work, because Peter's still going on for twenty-six or twenty-eight thousand dollars for next year, so we need fifty-three thousand dollars.
See, I think his two hundred gets paid out of litigation, is that right? For, because that's what he envisions, I think, that there's still, the, the Bradvers Board Supervisors case, uh, still, still going on, and so I think that the line item is gonna be litigation fund for him, is it not?
That's what I understand.
Whether it's litigation, or whether it's county attorney, that hundred thousand dollars is, you gotta go to all of that, and we gotta appropriate more money.
We're waiting until we see what the revenue is like from the treasurer, which, and today, so we'll have a better idea how we stand compared to last year's numbers.
And another thing, too, Mr. Frazier, I want to point out, is that, uh, at least, you know, I'm, I'm very optimistic that, that, uh, that litigation will come to an end in January, which is gonna obviously mean a whole lot more money. I can't guarantee that, but, that's my, that's my legal prediction, is that it's going to. So, that, that's kind of a finite expense, and it's over.
That would be a great...
Art, I've always, uh, kinda, heard from the public that they're wondering why we're having this whole thing anyways, as opposed to trying to settle it out of court, um, and maybe save the taxpayers some money, so, did you expand? It's bound on why we are fighting the issue, or...
Well, I think there was an initial, um, offer made, uh, that, uh, accompanied the first suit filing, uh, and, uh, of course, Mr. Frazier took that offer, uh, the rest of you gentlemen did not, um, because you believed that, uh, you had acted, uh, correctly, and that the FOIA law had not been broken. Um, I think that, that, that's the real, that's the historic reason why, but there's a policy reason why, I would think, and that is that if you settle cases with litigants, especially if they are of the frivolous nature, you're gonna encourage more. Uh, you know, if you settle, then you're, especially if you pay money out, uh, you're gonna have more of these types of suits. Uh, and it's like, uh, the Walt Disney World policy, they don't settle a case. You slip and fall on Walt Disney World, they're not paying, they're not paying you the nuisance fee, they're not paying your attorney's fees, nothing. They'll see you in court and slam the door, uh, so, and that's a policy decision that the, that this board, uh, may or may not make, depending on the merits of the case, but in this one, uh, certainly, uh, you would be well within your rights to do that, because the, the chance of success, in the view of myself and Mr. Luke, of the lawsuit on the petitioner's behalf is very small. So, to settle it, I don't know, do you think luck can purge more than that?
I think, uh, that's good, I think that's something the public needs to realize, that, and that's why we are, um, fighting this.
Well, I think suing individually for twenty-some thousand dollars, uh, penalties for what I allegedly did, I have no desire to settle this case. Well, that's, that, that, that's another thing for the board to think about, is that you all here serve, uh, at oftentimes great cost to yourselves and personally, and the benefit of your time, and you don't get compensated well. And I think that if we're gonna have a representative type of government, you don't wanna discourage people from taking on these types of positions. And, and, uh, if you're settling frivolous lawsuits, then that's gonna be, I think, a further deterrent toward people, uh, wanting to serve publicly. So, uh, that's another, another reason, Mr. Bennett, is to want not to settle. Now, if the board tells me to make a settlement offer, I'll certainly carry it to the other side. But I haven't had a realistic settlement offer from them as well, other than what was the opening camp.
Thank you, Art.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, any appointments, I guess it's nine. You live? All of our names were, uh, Chester Gap, no?
This, um, is an agreement and a resolution that was written by, uh, Mr. Goff or Mr. Luke. Warren County, um, is first due in, I'm sorry, Chester Gap is first due in Warren County. And so, therefore, they have an agreement, um, that is attached, that shows the funds that they are given for being first due in Warren County. Uh, Warren County is in the process of changing their EMS vendor, and took Warren County system away from Chester Gap, so they can no longer bill for EMS cost recovery. So, this resolution entitles Chester Gap to continue to bill for the county, and allows Warren County to come into, uh, Rappahannock County, so that both can continue to function, um, until we get a mutual aid agreement done. So, this allows for everybody to be comfortable that each jurisdiction has given approval for each to bill within their accounts. So, again, this resolution is done, um, to provide that since, um, Chester Gap cannot bill in Warren County with their computer system any longer. So, it says the automatic aid agreement, station number nine, attached to this resolution here before, approved by the county of Warren, Virginia, is hereby approved by the county of Rappahannock, Virginia. And so far, as it provides in paragraph two, that EMS transports made by Chester Gap, station nine in Warren County, shall be billed through the Rappahannock County Billing Program. In consideration of this agreement by Warren County, Rappahannock County agrees that Warren County may bill through the Warren County Billing Program for any EMS transports made by Warren County, County, or Department in Rappahannock. And this recalls, um, requires a vote.
I'll put that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chair.
A motion, I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Another one here from Chester Gap. Alright, uh, a vote called both? All right, uh, I have a vote called vote. Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Mr. Zinski?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
And Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. I think nothing is not very difficult. County Administrator, update.
Um, I have sent in all paperwork, um, for the children at play signs, and, um, I'm hoping that within the next week, I will hear from VCA, they are out surveying and determining where the signs will go. So as soon as we get that information, we can send someone out and put the signs up, so I'm hoping within the next two weeks, um, that it'll be completed. The comprehensive plan update, the planning commission met for four hours on Friday, November the eighteenth, at the library to review the current edition of a comprehensive plan. Their objective is to update only what is necessary at this point to bring the document into immediate compliance. Once this document is updated, reviewed and approved, they would soon thereafter begin a more thorough and comprehensive update to the plan to meet their obligations well before the next five-year deadline. Is there anything else you'd like to add to that, Mr. Franch?
No, just that we'll have to hold a schedule of public hearings.
Right. Also, um, Mr. Goff, Mr. Luke and I met with VCA, which is, uh, competitor to our current BMO coverage, uh, to talk to them, so we'll be looking at that further to see if it makes sense to look at putting together an RFP and, you know, what the cost advantages may be. So more to follow on that later. Um, we did have a meeting with Rack and John Sullivan, uh, regarding the bathrooms and, uh, the only thing that is really determined is that Ralph Bates will go out and determine what the true costs are. We really don't have any estimate, so he's going to go out and talk to a few people and see what he can find and, uh, get some drawings together. Uh, I'm working on an RFP for grinding at the landfill, I'd like to get that out, um, by the end of the year and, uh, hope that we can find someone that can come in and do that, um, at a reasonable price. We've had some issues with our county credit cards, I need to go meet with the bank, um, our account was not set up correctly and, uh, there's numerous issues involved, so I'll try to meet with them this week. And then Go Virginia has contacted me and would like to come in for a presentation in January, so if there's no objection, I will add them to the agenda.
You've got thirty-five million dollars that you understand.
That's it.
Well, good, that touches to, uh, towards common.
There's an email from Mrs. Doug on zoning amendments, uh, there's also paperwork, uh, regarding the Shandong National Park fee increase. And then, as mentioned earlier, there will be a meeting next week for the call paper of the zoning notice regarding here, Howard and Boston. Information, uh, Shandong Superintendent is retiring and also included is the November building permit report. And our next meeting will be January the fourth, two thousand seventeen.
Mr. Franch?
Yeah.
With respect to the Superintendent of Shandong National Park retiring in January, should this board, was some kind of resolution forward or some kind of a thank you for his service? I don't know what's customary.
We haven't done it before, but we've never really had one in the county either.
And he will continue to remain on the county.
I understand, right, I lost my line.
Yeah, I guess so. There you go, David. We just topped it over, President, just changed your name.
I I never had the opportunity to know him, but I knew his brother.
Cliff.
So he was a great guy.
New York.
Uh, that way.
Jim's the same one.
Yeah, he seems to be, they seem to be cut from the same tree.
So, can we adjourn? Any information? Need a motion to adjourn?
I don't think I motion to adjourn.
To adjourn, I'll second.
I'll second, Mr. Franch.
All of the favorites say aye? Merry Christmas to all, a wonderful night.